Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Harris. Vice Mayor Hanson. Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Guerra is expected momentarily. Councilmember Shenier.
I'm here now.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Warren will be absent this evening.
Very good. Well, first of all, I want to apologize to the public for our being 20 minutes late. We were in executive session, closed session, and so it went over a little bit, but we do not like to inconvenience the public, and we got here as quickly as we could. Okay. Let us begin with the pledge of allegiance, please. Everybody, if you can, please rise. I will lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we do have two special... The way we're going to proceed tonight is with briefly, if we may, with two special presentations, the consent calendar. Then we will take public testimony for items not on the agenda, and then we will get to our business, including the long-anticipated and important item of the Sacramento Convention Center renovation and associated projects. For those of you who are here from that, I would anticipate it will be 60 to 90 minutes before we get to that item. That would be my best estimate. Let us begin with the special presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Hanson for the recognition of the George Clark Scholarship recipient.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor to welcome Mary Harden Young from the Sexed Unified School District, here to present an award to a very deserving CK McClatchy High School student, Esther O., who's graduating from CK McClatchy and receiving this phenomenal scholarship.
Good evening. The George H. Clark Memorial Scholarship was established in agreement with the mayor of the city of Sacramento in 1950. Each year, the district's six comprehensive high schools submits an application, and the winner is selected by the George H. Clark trustees comprised of representative from the mayor's office, a principal of a high school in our district, the superintendent's office, and the scholarship coordinator. The recipient of this $5,000 scholarship, renewable for four years, is deemed the district's top student of the year. This year, it is my honor to present the 2018 George H. Clark Memorial Scholarship to a CK McClatchy graduate, Esther O. Esther plans on maintaining a 4.0 GPA in the Sacramento State Honors Program and hopes to receive a Bachelor of Science in the nursing program.
Thank you so much. Esther, would you like to say something? No? Where are you...[218.31][218.31](laughter) A woman, a few words. Where are you going to go to college next year?
Sacramento State.
Oh, awesome. I think that Councilmember Guerra would be holding his finger up for the stingers up. What are you going to study?
Nursing.
Nursing? That's awesome. What a wonderful profession. Congratulations on your accomplishment. I'm going to come down, and maybe Nell can take a photo for us.
Thank you.
Why don't you come down to the...[245.01][245.01](laughter)[246.01][246.01](applause) State Fair. Councilman?
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. This was a little bit of a surprise to me, but, you know, the state fair is located in District 3, and it's a pretty wonderful annual event for the city of Sacramento. I'm sure most of you people in the audience have attended at one time or another. I've gone, I think, every year for 25 years. Anyway, it's an awful lot of fun, and they showcase an awful lot of local talent, as well as our farm-to-fork identity, and they bring a lot of commerce to Sacramento, which is always a good thing. So I'd like to have the director, Rick Pickering, up to say a few words about the state fair.
Thank you, councilman. Rick Pickering, your California State Fair, Honorable Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Hanson, distinguished members of the city council, City Manager Chan, and the entire talented staff, thank you for your ongoing dedication and service to the people of California. It's our honor and a great privilege to present your California State Fair this coming July 13 through 29. With our statewide mission, last year, we were pleased that competitors from 56 of California's 58 counties actually made it out to state fair to be the best of the best. This year, building upon our celebration of farmworkers, we've created Life's Big Ag Venture, which will be highlighting jobs and careers in the field of agriculture. In concert with the National Geographic, we'll be showcasing the future of food around the world and how California helps feed the entire world. Last year, the state fair was the first state fair to create an Out at the Fair Day with our LGBTQ community. We'll be doing that again this year on Sunday, July 29, and the concert that night will be UB40. In another salute to California's rich heritage, we've created the state's first-of-its-kind statewide youth mariachi competition. We'll be showcasing 10 youth teams from around the state, from the Mexico border, throughout the Central Valley, the Bay Area, the Central Coast, Sacramento region, and those top 10 teams will be here to compete. And the night of their competition, they will also be allowed to go onstage and perform two shows with renowned mariachi Vargas. Mariachi Vargas is the top thought of mariachi ensemble throughout the world at this point in time, so we're excited about that. We'll be back with three weeks thoroughbred horse racing. We've also been made aware that during the summer, local food banks have a difficult time collecting the food supplies they need to help get people through summers. So to help generate food for those food banks, we've created a Free Before Three Food Drive on Mondays. So if people bring three non-perishable food items to the state fair on Mondays between opening and 3 o'clock, they'll get free admission to the state fair. So that's something we hope to be able to do. Thank you for that. You're a great cause. Concerts, you typically ask us what the concerts look like, from Cool in a Gang to Spinners to Confunction, ZZ Top, Trace Atkins, Easton Corbin, UB40 we mentioned, for a little retro-rock Night Ranger and War, Los Lonely Boys, Sugar Ray, Berlin with Terry Nun for the tribute bands. We love Queen Nation. We have a Beatle band again, Happy Together. Sac Republic will be playing a home match during the state fair as well. You have some award-winning Best of the Best Olive Oil for you to sample later this evening. And doing our part to support the economy of Sacramento, we've had great success in negotiating rental agreements with major events for the convention center that'll be moving out to Cal Expo in order to help with whatever renovation looks like at the convention center. Thank you again for all of your support. We appreciate it. Thank you.[537.62][537.62](applause)
Do you have a weather prediction for the...
Sorry?
Do you have a weather prediction for the...
If I have a weather prediction. Whenever we're in front of elected officials that have so much connections, we ask you to...[552.04][552.04](laughter) Whether you believe in prayer or not, we would ask you to pray for cool weather for all of Sacramento this July.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.[562.41][562.41](applause) Thank you, and may it be a great fair, as always. We appreciate it. Okay, let us move now to the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that members would like to discuss or remove from the calendar itself? If not, we do have... How many... Ron, I've got a little technical difficulty here. Would you like to borrow my mic?
Thank you. I do have one item. We're going to pull item 20 from the consent calendar, and that will not be voted on this evening.
Okay, item 20, without objection, is removed from the calendar. And let us now take the public testimony on the consent calendar, please.
I have five speakers for the consent calendar. The first is Mike Ubaldi, then Stephanie Duncan, then Ron Elmsley.
Welcome. Which I... If you could please identify the item that you are speaking about, we'd appreciate it.
River Cats Independence Field. Measure you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Are we on the same page?
I'm not sure.[643.29][643.29](laughter)
Okay.[645.29][645.29](laughter) I'm Michael Ubaldi, and I'm on the board of River Cats Independence Field, and it's come to my attention that the city has agreed to take over our project that we started about 14 years ago out at the Pennel Center. Not many of you were here when we first came before you to seek a memorandum of understanding regarding the use of a certain baseball field, but I would represent to you that the city council was wholeheartedly behind us at that point in time. Over the next few years, we developed a fully accessible baseball field, which was to be used by children with disabilities. Over the last 12 years, the various... Now you've got it, right? The usage has dramatically changed in the field. Not only do we serve the community of children with disabilities, we now serve extensively the community of wounded warriors who use our field for all types of events. We also serve after-school programs, just a multitude of programs for a myriad of purposes throughout the community. And you, the council, through your wisdom, have continued to support us over this period of time. The field became tired, and it had a 10-year life expectancy. It's served us well for 12 years. We've now had to enter a phase where we are totally renovating the field surface, and through your generosity, the surfacing will commence next month. And hopefully, the life of the field will be another 10 to 12 years and actually on into perpetuity. We could not have done this without the city, the city's ongoing support. In particular, I would like to acknowledge Councilwoman Bonnie Pennel. She was our spirit. She was our pride. She was our hope, and she was always there for us. And thankfully, we found that we have a new champion, Councilmember Larry Carr. Mr. Carr has done an incredible job for us and has supported us wholeheartedly. In addition, Gary Hayden, the city architect, and then the young lady who's passing gifts out right now, Annie De Salerno, she has championed us beyond belief.
Mr. Ubaldi, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment?
Okay, my final comment is this: Thank you so much, and thank you for your ongoing support.
You're a hero here, too, on this, and have done incredible work to keep bad dreams alive, Mr. Ubaldi. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
My next speaker is Stephanie Duncan.
Yes, Mr. Carr.
Mike, before you take off, the city and the whole region owes a great deal of gratitude to you and the team that put this together. I know the city supplied the field, but you, Art Savage, his wife now, Stan Atkinson, and other people raised the money to really make that a first-class field. And it's not enjoyed just by the people in District 8, but by the people all over the region. Every year, it's a pleasure to go out and watch the event that brings in wounded warriors from all parts of the state. So we owe you a great deal of thanks. Your kindness is greatly appreciated. And let's give him a hand, would you?[880.12][880.12](applause)
My next speaker is Stephanie Duncan, then Ron Elmsley, and Les Light.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Steinberg, and City Manager Chan. I'm Stephanie Duncan, and I'm the president of the Land Park Community Association. I'm here to talk about item number 30, the taking over of the Land Park Golf Course. Our association, the Land Park Community Association, was initially formed in 1985 directly to focus on protecting and preserving William Land Park. And since that time, even though our focus has expanded to cover a lot of community issues, we still hold William Land Park dear and do advocate on its behalf. William Land Park is a regional park. People enjoy coming there for the zoo, for Thunderland, for Fairy Tale Town, for the golf course, and many other amenities. And it's a gem to our city that needs a lot of maintenance and which has been neglected over the years, whether it be by budget cuts, lack of staffing, and so forth, to the extent that in 2010, the Land Park Volunteer Corps was formed, which is a group of volunteers that actually does a lot of maintenance once a month at the park that helps along the city's Parks and Recs Department. But we do have a lot of needs, and so in the midst of voting on taking over the maintenance for the golf course, we don't want those other needs to be forgotten. And so we do have a lot of needs, such as a new sprinkler system that is needed. I know it's very expensive, but it's something that is needed to keep our trees healthy and our park maintained. We need new park bathrooms. We just had one installed. We're waiting for it to be opened. It was a two-year process after it was burned down by arson, but the rest of our bathrooms really need to be replaced. And we need a comprehensive reforestation plan so that we can make sure that Land Park is here for people to enjoy for many years to come. So as you vote on taking over the golf course, please don't forget those other needs that our park needs.
Are you for the item? Are you in favor of it?
It's fine. We need to maintain all of our amenities in the park. Thank you.
You're welcome.[1014.82][1014.82](applause)
Our next speaker is Ron Elmsley.
Elmsley.
Ron Elmsley is speaking on item 9, Les Light on item 17, and then David Andre.
Number 9 says that they're going to award the collection of bad debts to ADPI for the ambulance service. I think the whole thing should be privatized. You know, you got people that... Two people in the ambulance are both making $100,000. It's $200,000. That's a real nice income. They took it away from the private part of the... It was a private part that was doing everything, and they came down en masse and said how great the city would if they could do it all, and, you know. So I just hope you turn this down and shut the ambulance down. Hire everything out. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Les Light on item 17, then David Andre on 17 and 18.
Yeah, speaking with regard to item 17, I would urge you to include a percentage of people hired to undertake this work to be unhoused persons, and particularly unhoused persons of color, please.
Our next speaker is... David Andre is speaking on item 17 and 18.
Hi, City Council. One thing I'm noticing here in town is we're spending a lot of money on vehicles. Yet I've been coming to city council meetings for like four years, and I haven't heard anything about any audit with any outside group is looking into the fact that we need so many vehicles. I mean, they're all over. City staff in vehicles, they're parked all over. The city garages are full of them. We have all these vehicles, and now we're being told that we need to spend about $75,000 just to wash the vehicles.[1159.12][1159.12](laughter) So I'd like to respectfully ask that we hire some unhoused people. We try to fit some people. We have a lot of young people that are recently unhoused on the streets. They're going to need job training. They need to have something to put on resumes, and that would be really good, you know, having some type of part-time work with the city, the same way with the bikeways. Can we get some jobs for some of these young people that are unhoused right now so they have something to look forward to in their life? Thank you.[1188.23][1188.23](applause)
I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff, particularly Shannon Brown and the Parks Department, and our City Manager Howard Chan for working through the issues with the William Land Park Golf Course management transition. First tee of Greater Sacramento, who had been managing the course since the '90s, was no longer able to continue, but Morton Golf stepped in, and they're able to invest money into the course and really help keep it going. Thank you, Stephanie, for reminding us of the other work we have to do in the park, but we'll continue to maintain this historic amenity for our citizens, and it's a great win for the community.
I want...
So I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you. As a very low-ranked amateur golfer, I also want to add my thanks as well, Shannon and your team, and Howard, and everybody, because we want to add things in our city. We want more amenities. We don't want to lose amenities, and there's no reason why we should lose a treasure like the Land Park Golf Course, which really does bring joy to a lot of people in the community. So relatively small amount of money, we were able to save it, and the community, I think, is deeply appreciative. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
No, no, no. No, you can't shout out, sir. That's not the way it works. You can only sign up. You can only sign up to speak. You're welcome to on...
I can speak as a citizen.
No, you can't shout out. You have to sign up. Okay?
Hello?
All right. All in favor of the consent calendar, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? The consent calendar passes eight to nothing. Again, item 20 was removed from the calendar. We now take public testimony on items not on the agenda. We do have a lengthy list of people who have signed up to speak, and so we will begin to hear from the people who sign up according to the regular rules.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have 49 speakers for matters not on the agenda this evening. I'd like to remind the audience that this meeting is being video-streamed and can be viewed live on the city's website or viewed later from the archived files. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room, and speaker slips do need to be turned in to the clerk prior to the beginning of each item. So that everyone has the opportunity to address the council, members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in chambers can be found on our website, a copy is in the back of the room, and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease any disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker does have two minutes to address the council. A cordless microphone or assisted listening device is available upon request from the clerk. Please silence your cell phones or other communication devices, and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. And also parking violations are available from the clerk at the front of the room. So again, I do have 49 speakers, so if you could line up so that we can swiftly get through these, I'd appreciate it. The first is Michael Voy, Cynthia Kay, and then Tanya Faison. Mr. Voy? Mr. Voy here?
He's here.
Following Mr. Voy is Cynthia Kay, Tanya Faison, Ayo Tunde Kiri. Mr. Voy.
I have here the cover sheet for a recent court case, United States Circuit Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit, which was filed June 11, 2018. And this case involves... It involves a lawsuit against Newport Beach over the 2014 police shooting of a man who suffered from schizophrenia and was under the influence of drugs. Now, the thing that's remarkable about this is, and there's a dissent, it was decided by a panel of... A sub-panel of three judges. But the thing about this is that the district court, district judge granted summary judgment for the defendants on 12... There were 12 causes of action, some based on the Constitution, some based on federal statutes, some based on California statutes. The circuit court found that there was a justified immunity for the officers involved, but they reversed and remanded all the 12 counts that applied to the city. So I thought I would bring this to the attention because the specific reason in here was the majority said it was undisputed that Voss was mentally unstable, and the ruling allows Voss's parents to pursue their suit against Newport Beach. The thing that they found in this particular case was a reasonable jury could conclude that Voss did not propose...
Mr. Voy, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I'm in the middle of it. Immediate threat such that this use of deadly force was warranted. So this is one of those deadly force cases.
Thank you, Mr. Voy.
Take a look at it. Thank you, Mr. Voy.
Our next speaker is Cynthia...[1567.12][1567.12](applause) Our next speaker is Cynthia Kay, then Brandon Smith... Oh, excuse me. Cynthia Kay, Tanya Faison, Ayo Tunde Kiri, then Steve Barnett. Ms. Kay?
I'm still here. I'm still homeless. You can't forget that people are out there, particularly seniors, that are homeless. I can't tell you how many programs I've been through already. So far, nobody's found me a place to live. I go from shelter to shelter. I heard... I've had several people talk to me and say, "Well, our understanding is the homeless want to be homeless." Well, I'll tell you, that's a lie. We don't want to be homeless. We want to have a place to live, and we're tired. I've been looking for a place since the 1st of February. Still, there's nothing out there affordable. There's nothing out there that is taking care of the seniors that are on fixed incomes. You have to be aware, we're still out there. Do something to help us.[1645.66][1645.66](applause)
Tanya Faison, then Ayo Tunde Kiri, and then Steve Barnett.
Can you zoom in? Is it possible to zoom in?
I can as soon as you start.
Hmm? Okay.
As soon as you start.[1677.41][1677.41](laughing)
Sorry for my notifications. So I'm back in here again, and (laughing) never mind, because y'all don't know when to be quiet. I'm back in here again, unfortunately, because somebody else died in police custody, SAC PD custody. It's not even been three months since Stefan was killed. We don't even have an investigation that's been completed, as far as we know, and we're still... We have another death on our hands in police custody. Brandon Smith. Could you please look at me when I'm talking?[1713.12][1713.12](applause) So on June 6, Brandon Smith was being transported from a facility to the jail. He was handcuffed. He was injured. It was obvious. And then he was thrown into the back of a police wagon. His head hit the side of that wagon pretty hard. They cussed at him. They told him to get his ass in the car. They treated him like he wasn't an animal. He needed medical attention, and instead, they brought him to the jail, and when they got there, he was dead.
Murder.
This is a problem. This is ongoing, and I'm so sick of coming in here and looking at you guys while you chew your food. We can't even bring food in here, but you guys are chewing your food, (applause), talking to each other. Howard Chan, you need to start firing these officers, because they're not going to stop doing this until you start giving them repercussions. Whether Daniel Han tells you to or not, it needs to happen. I'm so sick of this. You guys walk around downtown with smug looks on your faces while people are dying. In two more months, we're going to be in here for another person that's going to be killed by SAC PD. This is... It's got to end. You've got to stop.[1785.91][1785.91](applause) [applause] 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 [applause]
Our next speaker is Ayo Tunde Kiri, then Steve Barnett, then Danielle Boils. Last name is K-H-Y-R-E-E. Thank you.
My name's Ayo Tunde Kiri. It's truly unfortunate that we are now fighting for our second victim of section violence this year while still mourning the first, Stefan Clark. This next Black Lives Deprived belongs to Brandon Smith. Say his name.
Brandon Smith.
Say his name.
Brandon Smith.
Say his name.
Brandon Smith.
The videos should be enough, but when the autopsy and the family tell you what they need, you really have no other choice morally. Justice for Stefan and Brandon Smith.
Barnett, and then Danielle Boils, then David Wong.
Thank you very much. I'm sure you're familiar with the case of Callie Anderson, the five-year-old girl who was found dead in a Sacramento storage locker last month. The Solano County Superior Court awarded sole custody to her father despite the fact that he had a crack cocaine addiction. So sadly, the Family Law Division of Sacramento Superior Court also puts our children into the arms of abusive parents way too often. The court is rife with mediators who are often biased to one side and special masters who advocate for a treatment that they are then paid to deliver. When you get your car smogged, the testing garage is not allowed to do the repairs. But unfortunately, that conflict of interest is prevalent in the family law system where someone can advocate for a treatment that's needed and then get paid to deliver that treatment. So this is all overseen by overworked judges who often bring their own biases and ignore the law in assessing judgments. One common tactic is for an abusive parent to allege parental alienation, where the non-abusive parent is claimed to be brainwashing the kids. In about 95% of the cases, it's shown that there was truly abuse, but in many cases, much more than 5%, the family court system gives the children to the abusive parents. So I live in Elk Grove, but the reason I'm here is because we, I have a friend who lost her two kids to an abuser of this type. The agencies, the PD, the school district, people in the school district started to learn that, so now the two kids with the father are here in District 6 in Sacramento. He's escaping some oversight. So this is a state issue because it's present in Sacramento County, but it's present in other superior courts. So I'm asking for your help to work with us, to advocate for the state to look into this issue, to try and improve system, the system for these abused children, because we don't want to repeat another Callie Anderson situation, and we can improve the situation for the abused children that are caught in the family law system. Thank you.
Next speaker is Danielle Boils, then David Wong, then Alice Thomas.
Hi, this is my first time ever coming to a city council meeting. I actually live in District 2, who's not here tonight. I've been a state worker for five years. I bought my house in District 2 about three years ago, and today I got a call at work that my neighborhood was on fire. My neighborhood was on fire because we have a homeless encampment that lives there. It's not the first time it's happened. It's actually happened twice now. And the reason that I came out tonight is because, one, I came home, I thought to myself, what resources are provided in my community for our homeless population? And I couldn't find any, and that's really concerning, because what I could find was you guys wanting to do renovations on the convention center and all of these things that you're putting money towards. And everybody in this audience, nobody cares about any of that. They want human rights, they want a reduction of homeless people, they want, you know, crime prevention or law enforcement officers to, you know, do the right thing. And what you're talking about, none of your constituents care. What they care about is all of the things that you're not addressing. And, you know, I pay taxes, I'm a state worker, you know, and I, I work for the government, and how do I help people as a government employee when the government won't even help me? You know, so I, I really came out tonight. I didn't have anything prepared, but I was hoping to really address our representative from District 2, because it can't continue, and you guys have an obligation to everybody in this room to address their issues. And the rest of us, we don't care about your innovation, your, you know, arenas and all of that. We want to see change in our real issues that we have here. And thank you for your time, and I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that we have real concerns in our communities.
So ma'am, if you're done, are you done? I don't want to interrupt you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're done? Okay. If I may, excuse me. Excuse me. I have the right to speak to, to a member of the public after they've, they've finished their testimony. I know you knew, and I want to welcome you, and I want to encourage you to keep coming back, but I'd also like to inform you and make sure that you are informed that what you just said is absolutely untrue. For example, in Councilmember Warren's district, it's actually in Councilmember Harris's district, but Councilmember Warren has strongly supported a 200-bed triage center on Railroad Avenue. So we're doing a lot around the homeless issue. And I just wanted, I just want to invite you to come to my office, and I'd be happy to talk to you about all the things that we actually are doing to try to make homelessness a priority. Thank you.
You know, I appreciate that, and I look forward to hopefully meeting with you, so that way we can get a voice for everyone in your office.
I'd be happy to meet, I'd be happy to meet with you.
So, thank you.
Okay, ma'am? Thank you. Go ahead, Nick.
Next speaker is, my next speaker is David Wong, then Alice Thomas, then Frank Askins, then Eve Dixon. David Wong?
My name's David Wong. I'm representing service employee in National Union Local 1001. Curtis Park Court Senior Apartment is a federally designated low-income complex. During the first rent hike, five tenants were forced out of their home. During the second rent hike, the rent went up by $70. Between the first rent hike and the second rent hike, only nine months had passed. Jackie Hidemban is a resident at Curtis Park Court Senior Apartment. She used a wheelchair, and she received food from meal-on-wheel. She will not be able, she, she will not be able to afford a rent hike, and she will probably be forced out of her home. People of wealth and power are usually living a comfortable life. They are unaware of the hardship that the poor have to deal with. Is the government of, the city of Sacramento going to deal with this issue? The poor are suffering while the affluent are doing fine. If this rising rent issue is not confronted, the homeless population will grow exponentially. That's it.
Next speaker is Alice Thomas, then Frank Askins.
My name is Alice Thomas, but before I get labeled as a senile old lady with dementia, I want you to know I graduated from a George School of Law in 2009. The oldest person ever graduated from an ABA law school, as far as we know. That was while I tried to take care of a husband with Alzheimer's. I can also tell you why your rents are so high, as well as housing costs. I spent 30 years of residential construction, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm independent, I'm not a Democrat or Republican. I believe in the Constitution, the First Amendment, and equal protection under the law, as well as the right to peacefully petition the government to address our grievances. Equal protection requires states to treat all citizens equally, and many of us have grievances: seniors, blacks, Hispanics, environmentalists, gay, low-income workers, labor union members, taxpayers, high prescription costs, and pre-existing conditions. The right of the First Amendment's not restricted only to those that agree with you. All points of law should be discussed, and police presence should be at all political public meetings, regardless of point of view. Last night, I attended a town hall meeting hosted by Tom Steyer. For the first meeting, for the first hour, everything was peaceful, and Mr. Steyer answered all questions to the enthusiastic applause of several hundred in the audience. Then immediately behind me, a young verbal terrorist with a red Trump hat screamed out at Mr. Steyer, "Why don't you support this country?" He had some metal object on the end of a stick, which he waved, almost hitting me on the head. Then he tried to start a fixtive.
Mrs. Thomas?
I, along with others, left immediately. We were afraid of the violence and someone was going to get hurt.
Mrs. Thomas, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
What disturbs me greatly is if this had been a Black Lives Matter meeting, the place would have been crawling with police, but there was no...
Thank you.
But there were no police presently at this public meeting. Tom Steyer and all others should be able to point out any grievances they have with the Trump government or any other government, and there should be police present to protect this right.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alice.
Good evening. My name is Frank Askins, and I've lived in the Sacramento for 42 years. I have a few questions for the mayor and the city council. Sacramento rates are, rents are rising faster than any other city in the nation. According to the 2012 Census of Governments, we have 19,519 cities, 16,360 towns, and 3,031 counties in the United States. Why is my beloved city number one in pricing middle-class families, matriarch and/or patriarch -headed households out of the rental market? Why do some in this chamber remain silent? Like the Honorable Martin Luther King Jr. said, "There comes a time when silence is betrayal." Tonight, I urge the city council members to hear the voices of their constituents and not just those of developers, and support rent stabilization and just cause eviction protections for Sacramentoans.
The next speaker is Eve Dixon, then Renee Dorsey.
Good evening. My name is Eve Dixon. I'm also a member of SEIU Local 1000 and a state worker. I've lived in Sacramento since 1993. I moved to Sacramento from the Bay Area. I moved from the Bay Area as a single mom with an asthmatic son who was working for the state in order to be able to take the time off I needed to make sure he got the health care he needed. I want to talk this evening about why we need rent stabilization and just cause eviction protection for Sacramentoans. While I appreciate the recent dialogue that the mayor is having with our coalition on ways we can all come together and rally around one of the most pressing issues in our city today, we still haven't heard from individual city council members. And I'm wondering why some on this dais remain silent while working families are struggling to keep up with the predatory behavior of landlords who on any given month can send a rental price increase to its tenants without any justification. We are urging the city council members to challenge the community, to channel the community voices and support rent stabilization and just cause eviction protections for Sacramentoans. When I moved to Sacramento in 1993, it was a great place to be, to be single, to have a decent job, and raise a child. Now, it's almost impossible when you're paying more than half of your gross income or your total income to rent. It doesn't allow for you to do the things that you need to do to make sure that you're able to raise your children in a safe and healthy environment.
Next speaker is Renee Dorsey, then Barbara Bumpers, then Irene Green. Renee Dorsey? Renee? Is Renee not here? Barbara Bumpers, then Irene Green.
Good evening. Rent control is out of hand. It's getting higher and higher. Most of our senior citizens can't make it from month to month, especially if they're living on their own and on a fixed income. Most can't afford to buy groceries or clothing. Most of them have to rely on food lockers, thrift stores, instead of the grocery stores and department stores, so they buy what they can afford. They have to choose between healthcare issues, raising medical costs, medication, while doctors' visits and co-payments are multiplying, as well as other transportation that seniors do still have to pay for. Financial security, all these high issues and more has a very huge impact on our seniors and the cost of living while they're on fixed incomes. How would you, how would you react on rent control if it was your mother, your grandmother, your daughter, your son was on rent control issues, living on the streets, cars, or riverbanks? Human kindness, where is your compassion for our family and community?
The next speaker is Irene Green, then Michelle Burgess, then Keon Bliss.
Good afternoon. I'm Irene Green, and I am also a transplant from the Bay Area. I arrived in Sacramento about two years ago, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the rent stabilization that should come to Sacramento County. When I was in the Bay Area, a number of my coworkers, I work for the state of California, by the way, actually relocated to Sacramento because they could no longer afford to live in the Bay Area. Imagine my surprise when I arrived to Sacramento and they are now telling me that they cannot afford to live in Sacramento. Rents have been increasing steadily with no way of stopping it, and so we need rent stabilization. More than half of Sacramento residents are renters. Renters are much more vulnerable to rising housing costs and evictions than homeowners and are valuable members of the community. There are some people that I work with currently that have been pushed out of their homes and are now trying to find a place that they can live, that they can afford, as well as making sure that they have someplace for their children to be in a safe environment, and they cannot find anywhere or anyplace to be. They're actually in danger of losing their jobs because they can't report to work because they don't have a home, and they're looking for that home. Rents are actually rising faster than any other city in the nation, and I know that you all are aware of this. Increasing rents are particularly difficult by families already spending over half of their income, like one of my other coworkers had said, on rent, and the expenses of quality food, transportation, healthcare, and other necessities. So I'm urging you guys to take a look at rent stabilization, take a look at ways to control the rising costs of housing in Sacramento County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Next speaker is Michelle Burgess, then Keon Bliss.
Good evening. This is also my first time speaking at a city council.
Welcome, welcome to you.
Thank you very much. My name is Michelle Burgess. I live in City Council District 7, Mr. Jennings, and I am a single mother of three, with more than 50% of my income going towards my monthly rent expenses. I'm also a member of SEIU 1000. We represent more than 96,000 state workers here in California. We're also led by President Yvonne Walker. In order for, like I said, I work for the state. I struggle with most of my income going towards rent. People who work in the great city of Sacramento should be able to afford to live here also. Rent in Sacramento is rising faster than any other city in the nation. I too moved from the Bay Area about 20 years ago, a single mother wanting to have... I too moved from the Bay Area about 20 years ago, a single mother wanting to have a decent job, and working for the state was a good thing for me at the time. I used to be able to have a decent apartment for about $650 a month. That was 20 years ago. In order for my children to receive a quality education and live in a safe neighborhood for them to grow up in, I now pay $1,800 a month for a two-bedroom apartment. I don't have my own room anymore, because those are the sacrifices I make in order to make sure my kids live in a decent neighborhood in the Pocket area, Greenhaven area. This is what I have to do. That doesn't include other housing expenses like food, utilities, transportation. Those are just the basic necessities. We can't go out. We can't do anything. Rent control is fair. Rent control and just cause eviction protections keep tenants in their homes. Tenants who spend less money on rent spend more monies in their community. Low and middle-income families are able to save money for the future emergencies. I want to be able to send my kids to college. I want them to participate in organized activities, and I would like to take my kids on summer vacation sometimes. Most important...
Burgess, your ten minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment?
I will. Most important, my children deserve to live in sustainable communities, enjoy the fruits of social, economic, and environmental justice. Thank you.
Keon Bliss, and then Brazi Liberty.
Mayor Steinberg, members of city council, you have a problem. From what I can tell from your enforcement of decorum of city council chambers, you seem to have serious anger management issues directed at black members of the public who speak before you. It showed in one of my first experiences in city council about a year or two ago, when you, Mayor Steinberg, were made to apologize for shouting down a black speaker during their public commentary the week before. It shows in how quick you are to interrupt and talk down to black speakers during their two-minute public commentary, despite the fact that you don't seem to do that for white members of the public speaking. It showed again last week, when you threw me out, despite being silent, after you finished threatening members of the public for speaking during public testimony. All this begs for me...begs the question for me: What are you so angry about? Are you paying more than half of your income and skyrocketing rent rates just to live in Sacramento? Do you struggle to keep a roof over your head? Is your white neighborhood being gentrified by black members of the government? Do you feel threatened and attacked from members of our city's government just for the color of your skin or the class of your dress? Have you experienced stop and frisk just for walking down the street, looking suspicious? Do you have to worry about your children, how your children are being treated by law enforcement when you're not around? Do you have to have the talk with them on how they should respond? Do you have any members of your family that have been gunned down in their own backyards, like Stephon Clark? Do you have members of your family who have been abused, brutalized, and even killed in police custody like Brandon Smith? Now, I'll grant you, you get a lot of heat during these weekly meetings on a regular basis, and that's unexpected.
Mr. Bliss, your two minutes is complete.
But unless you are actually experiencing these problems, I will question what you have to be angry about. Most of you on city council are white, are white passing.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss. Your two minutes is complete.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. You need to...
Our next speaker is Brazi Liberty, then Anita Ross. Our next speaker is Brazi Liberty, then Anita Ross, then Eileen Joy.
Daniel Hahn put in that recommendation. Howard Chan, do your job. What happened to Brandon Smith? Say his name.
Brandon Smith.
Say his name.
Brandon Smith.
Fuck rent control if we can't make it home. Fuck rent control if police invade our homes for whatever reason.
Excuse me. The use of profanity in these chambers is not allowed, sir. Can you use profanity? I'm going to ask you to leave.
And all he has to say is he feared for his life. I fear for my life.
Hello?
I fear for my life behind the wheel. I fear for my life walking on the sidewalk. I fear for my life...I fear for my life in my own home lying in bed. Remember Fred Hampton? I fear for my life here and now, surrounded by badges, surrounded by the enemy. I shall not show weakness. I shall not waver. I will stand strong, firm in this black body as I celebrate Juneteenth, remembering the day the last slaves in Texas found out they were free in 1865. And somehow today, we still find ourselves asking for safe passage, the right to live comfortably and pursue happiness. Give me liberty or give me death. Those were the words repeated throughout the 13 colonies in the 1700s to push the Revolutionary War against the British. And here I am, a black indigenous man with the same complaints against America, the corporation, taxation without representation. Where's my representation? One of eight of you renounced your endorsements to the murderer, Ann Schubert, and it wasn't the black man, Rick Jennings and Larry Carr. Give me liberty or give me death. Happy Juneteenth, bitches.
United we stand, divided we fall.
Happy Juneteenth, bitches. All power to the people.
United we stand, divided we fall. You got it. You got one.
Excuse me. Next.
My next speaker is Anita Ross, then Eileen Joy, then Danielle Munoz.
Can we zoom that in? So today is the first of eight days for Eight Shots took place in Meadowview. Mr. Carr, Mr. Steinberg, in the backyard of my uncle's home that he lived in for nearly 50 years. His wife, the grandmother of Stephon Clark, opened the back window to see her grandson bleeding and dead.
Eye contact.
With a cellphone in his hand, and two scared officers who muted their body cameras because there is a lack of accountability and transparency in this city and the policies that surround how cops police citizens in targeted communities that have citizens that have black skin. There should be shame. You should feel shame. You should not be able to sleep at night. Black Lives Matter Sacramento, other organizations in this town, along with SAC Act, Voices of the Youth, BSU SAC City, we have gotten together to collaborate on eight days, Eight Shots, in memory of Stephon Clark. But let's flip ahead and connect that to Brandon Smith, who was found dead in police custody, and the lack of concern for his health and well-being by not calling an ambulance from a state facility, CDRC, not calling an ambulance by SAC PD. Instead, they took a 15-minute drive where he ended up dead. Eight days, eight shots.
Mrs. Ross, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Eight days, eight shots. 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 Eight days, eight shots.
Our next speaker is Eileen Joy, then Danielle Munoz.
I'm Eileen Joy with the Sacramento Housing Alliance. Every day, our office receives calls from Sacramento families with young children, our neighbors with chronic health problems and disabilities, domestic violence survivors, and many others who are desperately seeking housing. Many have been displaced by an increase in rent, or though they were tenants in good standing for many years, who paid their rent on time, they were evicted as their landlord decided to flip their building and charge more rents. Many of these folks end up homeless and calling our office. Nationally, according to Housing and Community Development data, for every $100 increase in median metropolitan rent, there is a corresponding increase of up to 30% in homelessness. Sacramento City has over five evictions every day, with an average of 9,302 evictions per year in the county as a whole.
Waste the money.
These numbers only reflect those evictions that went through the formal and lawful detainer process. The number of households displaced in this city is actually much higher, as many folks are often intimidated into leaving before the UD is filed. By day, I work in housing, but last year, my rent was increased, and I was forced to move from the city into the county. Without the anti-displacement measures of rent stabilization and just cause, many residents of this city will be following in my footsteps. Many already are. Increasing commute times and our carbon output, separating family and neighborhood support networks, and placing our most vulnerable neighbors under the crushing pressure of chronic stress, we cannot achieve our goals as a city for equity, for our climate, for prosperity, for mental health, without addressing housing instability. I urge the council to offer real support and stability to all Sacramentoans. It starts with a home.
Ms. Joy, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Support rent stabilization and just cause for eviction. It's the moral thing to do.
Speaker is Danielle Munoz, and then Breon Mays, and we have about 30 more speakers.
My name is Danielle Munoz, and I am the case manager at Sacramento State, and I support students who experience homelessness, food insecurity, financial crises. And I'm just here to shed light on how our students have been caught in the crosshairs of the rent crisis. A recent chancellor's office study showed that 1 in 10 of our students are experiencing homelessness, and I do sit with our students personally and help them. They are living on the river, in shelters, and on the streets, and trying to go to school. It's really disruptive to their academic plans. Just to give you some information about our city, we have...Sacramento State serves 30,000 students. The community colleges serve 75,000 students, and then UC Davis serves another 35,000, and many of which live here. So when we think about rent stabilization, just know that our students are your renters, and in addition, they are our future doctors, lawyers, nurses. We met a young woman earlier tonight who received a scholarship and wants to go to SAC State, and we want to make sure that she can afford her rent so that she can continue going to school. Up to 46% of our students are also experiencing food insecurity, and with their FAFSA aid that they receive, they get about $1,000 left after tuition's paid to afford living cost books and anything...food, all of their basic needs. So you think about the national recommendation is not spending no more than 30% of your income on rent, and they get about $1,000 a month to use, and that equals about $300. So as we know, they're getting priced out. And so if we want to continue leveraging the intellectual capital that we foster here by having all these colleges and students, we need to start looking at rent, and now it's impacting our students. Sacramento State's tried to address it in our own way. We had to open an emergency housing program, which I run. So I'm here personally because I want to elevate the voices of my students. They need housing, as everyone else in this room.
Thank you for coming and for what you do. Appreciate it. Jay?
Just really quickly, I don't know if you know—I assume you do—we had a conversation with the president last week about how we can better coordinate for the services that we do have, and I know that there's a lot of different ways that you're going at it at SAC State, so it's much appreciated.
Yeah, and I'm David and Goliath in this, and rent is my Goliath, so I really need help with that.
Understand.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Breon Mays, then Rashid Siddique. Calling Mr. Siddique is Rebecca Person. Breon Mays?
All right, so I'm here once again. Brandon Smith's brother. That's my oldest brother. I have four kids. To this day, it took my mother 13 days to ID her own son. 13 days. She was not allowed to do it at the hospital due to law enforcement's...due to their say, for whatever reasons. Took her 13 days. Since June 6, I had to wake up every morning and look my mother in the eyes and hear her say, "Your local law enforcement took her son." I can't even understand the pain my mother goes through, let alone my own pain. Something has to change within our law enforcement. It's two or three months after Stephon Clark's murder. Is it going to happen every two or three months? You know? I mean, I highly doubt y'all want Ferguson in Sacramento. Because the people are fed. You know, it's a matter of time. It's like a ticking bomb, you know? You have the power to make it happen. You know? You got to do something about it. You can nod your head. It's about...it's actually about what are you going to do about it? There's plenty of people that came up here in my position and asked you to do the same thing, so I can't take a nod for your word. It goes for the rest of everybody else sitting up there. You guys wake up every morning, smile, get out your nice houses, cars, come down here, get on your panels, do what you have to do. Go home like nothing has ever happened.
Mr. Mays, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
But it's still people out here dying within police custody.
One more time. You interrupted the meeting one more time. I'm going to ask you to leave.
So we are asking justice for Brandon Smith. Hopefully, you're able to do something with your law enforcement. I know the people will say his name, but I want to hear you say his name. Brandon Smith.
Ms. Mays, your two minutes is complete.
Brandon Smith, and I'm very sorry for your brother's passing and your loss. Thank you.
Murderer. 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 Handcuffed, never to be checked on until arriving here down the street or up the street. Dead. Mayor, you're known for a lot of things. You're going to be known for having blood on your hands now. It's not good.
Rebecca Person, and then Brenda Anderson.
I come here, and I don't even know what to say. I get tired of coming here. You shouldn't have to be coming here. Stephon Clark was killed three months ago. If I killed somebody, if I went and... If I killed somebody, if I went in somebody's backyard and shot them, I would be arrested that day. What investigation do you have to take three months? If I went in your backyard and shot at you, Mr. Jennings, that day, and they knew I did it, they're gonna arrest me, okay? We knew these officers did it, they went in the backyard. How long does an investigation need to take? It's overdue. It should have been done within 30 days. I mean, what else are you waiting for? We got everything back. We have shooting from the side of a wall. Do you know how much it traumatized the community in Meadowview? My family's traumatized. Ever since Stephon was killed, I have to take sleeping pills to go to sleep, okay? Because all I hear is helicopters now. Because that night, he was shot, he was killed, assassinated, they had the helicopter going for hours, and usually, it will have, like, say, you know, whoever they're looking for. It was quiet, all you heard was a helicopter. Howard Chan, you need to fire these officers. If not, the people will show up at your house.
Oh, come on. No.
And I will be one of those, because if we have to feel uncomfortable, see how it feels to feel uncomfortable?
No threats. Come on.
It's not a threat. It's not a threat.
Next speaker is Brenda Anderson, then Ron Elmsley, then Robert Copeland. Brenda Anderson?
Ms. Anderson.
First and foremost, we have pain, and pain don't go away. It's subsides, and we arise. You carry that in our hearts. It's not going anywhere. We must deal with it and arise from it. We carry it in the spirit of life, not in pain. Second, I'm here to talk about homelessness. Take the word homeless, and then take the word helpless next to it, and then take the word hope and put that next to it. And the hope is those assembly bills that we have for, hold on here. Assembly Bill 1676781397 regarding the State Housing Accountability Act and proper zoning for land and support housing for development, sufficient infrastructure. These are some of the actions that will give these people hope, that there will be a resolution for the homeless situation, for affordable housing. There are quite a few bills out here, actually, that are addressing these issues, but they haven't followed through into the process and worked their way into the system and given leeway. So that would be a very, very large asset in stepping forward to progress this situation. I was homeless once, and I felt helpless, and I gave myself hope that there was something out there. And for anyone that is homeless or have been, know that there is a dark time and there is a sunshine, and there will always be a dark time.
Ms. Anderson, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment?
And there will always be a sunshine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ron Elmsley, then Robert Copeland, then LB Pixel.
Ron Elmsley has left. Let's please move to the next person.
Robert Copeland, and then LB.
It's Police Chief Hahn here. Here about the People on Black Lives Matter, they are upset about all the black people getting shot by the police department. This needs to end, there should be an investigation in the police department. And the officers that are doing the shooting should be fired after investigation, a thorough investigation by an impartial source, not by their own department. And why was another black person, Brandon Smith, killed in a police wagon? I don't get it. I don't get it. There should be an investigation on all people that are killed by the police department, and then if they're guilty, fire them or put them in jail.
Put their bosses in jail.
Now, to the homeless issue. Last week, I know a guy named Shorty that's homeless, he died. He was chronically homeless. He should not have died, to tell you the truth. He should have gotten help. Sacramento City was a little too slow to help him. And now, to rent stabilization. I know people are getting evicted because rent's going up too high. We need rent stabilization, just cause eviction, to help the people, because what the city is doing right now is not working on a lot of issues.
Next speaker is LB, then Dante Palaio.
We're here again, the same time, same, same month, same year, asking, appealing to the moral conscience of monsters. And, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me, and I am not here to appeal to your moral conscience, because you don't have any. At this point, why are we still, why are we still asking for convictions of the killers of people? Okay? Howard Chan, you are supposed to be in charge of the SPD Underground. There are officers on there that continues to make fun of people, talking about their suffering. They actually said, they're trying to change the narrative about Brandon Smith's death, saying that it's because he was under the influence of alcohol. He had a medical event that you, you people, are responsible for. You are accessory to murder. You have, he had a medical event that you failed to help, okay? You failed to do everything possible to medically preserve his life. Furthermore, you are, the SPD Underground, they're promoting the fact that Stephon Clark should have been killed because he was a vandal. Seems to be consistent, isn't it, that this whole, there's a law that's being passed that you don't have to even think about anything, you can just shoot before you think, as a police officer. Whatever happened to the innocent before proven guilty? How did we hand over absolute power to the worst element? The most violent element of this society?
Thank you. Our next speaker. Next speaker is Dante Palaio, then Sam Greenup, then DeShawn Carter.
Palaio ain't here.
Sam Greenup, then DeShawn Carter. Thank you for that.
Hello, I'm Sam Greenup. So I'm a resident of Jay Shneer's District, District 5. I've lived in the city my whole life, born and raised, 22 years, and I can't afford to live here anymore. And I'm just here to say, you know, that I support rent control, and it's pretty, pretty reasonable. You know? But it's really hard for me to come up here and say this stuff and talk about rent control when, you know, I just have, like, so much privilege being a white person when, like, people of color are just completely under attack by, by the system. They're being attacked by the landlords, being evicted for no reason, and then at the same time, we have a police department that cooperates with ICE.
It's not true.
They do. I've seen it firsthand.
That's true. It's true!
Not only that, they're cooperating with ICE, but at the same time, they can't give people their basic constitutional rights. Innocent before proven guilty is pretty basic. We're treating nonviolent criminals like they're violent offenders. I don't know, I mean, it's pretty crazy. I just, you know, I'm, yeah, that's all I gotta say.
Next speaker is DeShawn Carter, then Cory Ring.
Yeah, so I'm actually here today to speak on rent control. So we need rent control in Sacramento, and I know that the California Apartment Association, they want to be able to regulate themselves and impose rent control on themselves, but I feel like in this country, we have a history of corporations and people who represent corporations, associations, doing a poor job of regulating themselves. We have an OSHA in this country because between 1935 and 1970, 400,000 people died while on the job. We have an EPA in this country because rivers get polluted, fires, et cetera, et cetera, and we have, we have banking regulations because the housing market crashed. So we need rent control in Sacramento, but we need it to come from you guys and not the corporations or the people who represent them. Also, I think we also need eviction defense in Sacramento. So I did a little research, and when we get rent control, and I'm gonna say when, because you know, sometimes you gotta speak it into existence, when we get rent control, we need eviction defense. Now, between the years of 2011 and I want to say 2014, there was something called the Shriver Project, and what it was, was a collaboration between the county superior court, the law school, and somebody else, I'm just forgetting right now. Anyway, but yeah, so they collaborated together to help low-income people fight off unjust evictions. So they would provide, like, counsel to the people, full representation if they needed it, and mediation as well. So 70% of the clients that they had in the cases that they dealt with, 70% of them were settled outside of court, and 90% of the people who they represented said that they had a positive result from getting represented, representing whether they got to stay in their homes, whether their rent got reduced, or whether they was able to move away in a timely fashion. So I definitely think that when we get rent control, when we get rent control in Sacramento, we also need to have eviction defense for low-income people. That's my time.
Speaker is Cory Ring, and then T. Rourke Ellerman.
Good evening. I was hoping the mayor was gonna be here, because I had some comments for him, but you're just as good. So, good evening. My name is Cory Ring Martinez. I live in Curtis Park, and I'm a member of the Democratic Socialists of America. I'm here to speak about the, about the housing crisis in Sacramento. I've lived in Sacramento for two years now. Mr. Steinberg ran for mayor on a platform of solutions for the crisis of people experiencing homelessness, and I remember because I knocked doors for him. So I remember that that mission was pretty laudable, because I'm sure you guys are all aware that many human rights organizations and international covenants have declared housing as a basic human right. And so the reluctance that Mr. Steinberg and you guys are expressing and supporting this type of measure is really, leaves me a little confused. So rent stabilization is a viable and necessary tool to keep people in their homes, and it really does not conflict with any of the other solutions that are on the table right now. But then I consider the amount of money that developers are spending in local politics, as reported in the News &amp; Review, and suddenly, it becomes understandable why you believe the things that you do. Sacramento's housing history is the history of so much of the country, stolen land and the economic dispossession of people of color. Let us not forget that the neighborhoods that are today overpoliced and underserved, like Meadowview where Stephon Clark was murdered, are the cruel inheritance of intentional policies designed to destroy prosperous communities of color. Where euphemisms of blight justify forced evictions and extraordinary rent increases follow revitalization. Where the well-off prosper and we are forced out. Please do not let history repeat itself again and again and again. The people who this city council serve are needlessly suffering.
Your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comments, please?
When they suffer for too long, I'm almost done. When they are suffering for too long, there are consequences, and those consequences can outlive and permanently spoil our shared future. So you all have the power to make a moral choice.
I was complete.
Please support rent stabilization and just cause eviction in the city of Sacramento and be on the right side of history.
Speaker is T. Rourke Ellerman, then Pastor Chris Logan.
Good evening. I live at the corner of Fifth and I, and I have lived there for 10 years, and I walk my little dog daily, sometimes past the jail, and not every day, but often. I cannot tell you, I can't count on two hands how many times I've seen people released without their shoes that they went in with. Now, that's small peanuts compared to the deaths of these two young men that have occurred. But if you look, if you read the media releases that the jail puts out, you'll notice that there's, I think, an inordinate number of deaths in our jail, and while they're in custody. You also note that each case, there's a statement that there's, "At this time, no information leading to investigators to suspect foul play." Of course, the media doesn't mention how inmates are discouraged from using the emergency button in their cells, and fails to tell how long supervising officers have taken to respond to any calls for help. We need a citizens' police correction review board who will investigate complaints involving the city police and the county sheriffs. And lastly, if Sacramento is indeed a sanctuary community, which I was given the impression it is, why does the jail have an embedded ICE agents, as Scott Jones told the president on March 20? I don't know about the city police, but Scott Jones actually said that to the president, and you can see it online.
Speaker is Pastor Chris Logan, then Susan Boulade, then Laura Blossom.
Thank you all for the time. My name is Pastor Chris Logan. I'm the pastor of the Movement United Methodist Church. I was asked to speak today on rent control by the labor unions, but it would be remiss of me to speak, to not speak on behalf of black people as a black man. I moved here about a year ago, and in October or November of last year, I was pulled over because the light on top of my license plate had gone out. The police officer then told me, after he informed me that the light had gone out, he told me not to make any sudden movements or to reach anywhere. Now, I have a bachelor's degree in business administration, I have a master's in divinity. I did not work that hard to be told by a police officer not to make any sudden movements. I also arrived today because I am appalled by the lack of support on controlling rent increases in our city. It is becoming impossible for people who are at a low or moderate income level to live in our city. We are the capital city of California, and instead of setting the example in our country for how we truly create space for all people, regardless of their income level, we lead the country in rent increases. According to ABC News, our rent levels are rising faster than any other city in the country. It is unacceptable to expect workers to commute into our city 30 to 45 minutes and not enjoy the fruits of their labor in the city that they work in. It's an aristocracy politic, and it is not the city that I want to live in, and as leaders of our city, you should be ashamed. Rent control and just cause evictions protect the most vulnerable and give renters the possibility of being long-term contributors to the community. Rent control leaves tenants with more money to spend on our local economy, and it is a lie to say that rent control stops development of new housing.
Pastor Logan, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Cities with rent control are experiencing some of the highest per capita construction rates in our state. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you support rent control and just cause evictions.
Next speaker is Susan Boulad, then Laura Blosser.
And then Kathy Creswell. We have about 20 speakers left.
Thank you. My name is Suzanne. I'm with the Refugee Enrichment and Development Association. We're a direct services organization for mainly Syrian, Iraqi, and Afghani refugee families here in Sacramento. Families that can't vote for you guys yet, but they will soon. By far, the biggest issue that we find our families bringing to us to help them with is housing. Of course, finding it, considering that rent increases have rapidly displaced families that have already been chronically displaced due to war and violence, only to not be able to find that security and stability here in Sacramento. But I also want to focus on something that, you know, a lot of the wise voices here today haven't really touched on as much, and that's keeping housing. I'm speaking to what I know, and these are powerful anecdotes. But I have seen families displaced, not just due to rent increases, but because our lack of just cause eviction allows for management and apartment complexes to make decisions that adversely affect the lives of these families. First off, we've seen complexes displacing black and brown families from their complex in order to move in refugee families with easy access to public assistance. Once that money runs out, those families are then kicked out in turn. Oftentimes, they're evicted for struggling to integrate, miscommunication due to language barriers, or just because the manager doesn't like them. These implicit biases are the same tendrils of white supremacy that keep our communities of color marginalized and keep police from being held accountable to the law. Just cause eviction and rent stabilization is a crucial part of racial justice, economic justice, and of keeping Sacramentoans, both our native and adopted families, safe, housed, and secure.
Thank you for your comments. Laura Blosser. Laura, you're next, and then Kathy Creswell, and then Keith Person.
Hi, my name is Laura Blosser, and I live in District 2. I recently worked for four years as a project manager of affordable housing projects. One of these projects was for senior housing in Coria Town in Los Angeles. You know how many applications we received? We received, for 65 available units, we received over 3,000 applications from qualifying low-income seniors. We're in the middle of a serious housing crisis. Over 54% of California renters are cost burdened. These people devote more than 30% of their income towards housing costs. And more than 2 in 3 of these Californians with unaffordable housing costs are people of color. 62% of white people own their own homes, while only 27% of black people own their own homes. I own my own home. I am also a landlord, and I am in support of rent control. If I can afford my mortgage at the time that I purchase the property, then I can afford the mortgage five or 10 years later because my 30-year mortgage is fixed. That means I'm only marginally impacted by inflation, only really for maintenance items or small repairs. I'm still able to earn a profit on my rental property by keeping the rents equal to the rate of inflation. If the rent control is capped at the rate of inflation or even a little above it, you are not holding back landlords trying to earn a living. You are merely preventing them from exploiting the poor. Greed is the only true rationale against rent control. It is the only reason that people fight against it. Rent control is fair, and it makes sense. Most seniors rely on fixed or at least predictable expenses in order to survive. Affordable housing is desperately needed, and rent control is one achievable piece in this puzzle that can keep senior citizens housed and off of the streets. I just, I think, especially with the wealth disparity between white and black households and the history of redlining, and so many other reasons, rent control...
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Blosser. Your time is up.
Thank you. Rent control is critical.
Thank you. Ms. Creswell, you're up. Robin Mulcher, and then Olivia Minor. Again, after Ms. Creswell is Mr. Person, Robin Mulcher, Olivia Minor.
Great. Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Creswell. I'm on the Board of the Sacramento Housing Alliance and also Mutual Housing California. And I'm here to urge you to support reasonable rent controls. We've long, and you've all recognized, the importance and the need for building more affordable housing. But that's a long-term strategy. People are suffering now. And the only way to solve that problem now is to protect them through a reasonable rent control and just cause eviction. I know it's complex. I know it's controversial. You're probably getting lots of reports outlining all the problems they can cause. But for every report that talks about how bad it is, we can provide you with equally rigorous academic reports talking about the benefits of rent control. So, this is really an issue that has to be thought of and decided on, not just with your heads, but with your hearts. And I want to talk a little bit about my personal experience with rent control. When I first moved to California, I had, was just starting out and had the benefit of living in two communities with rent control. And we were struggling to make ends meet, to try to start our careers and try to find a job. But because I lived in a place where my rent was protected and I was protected from being unreasonably evicted, I was actually able to get a good job, to actually even be able to pay my bills and save a little money so that by the time I moved to Sacramento, we were able to save enough money to do a down payment. And I'm a homeowner today because I lived in rent-controlled communities in the past. Everybody in this community deserves that opportunity. And for many of them, it's not a matter of just wanting to be able to protect their, to save money, but it's literally to be able to save their homes. So, rent control, reasonable rent control balances property rights and property interests in having a fair return on investment against...
Thank you, Ms. Creswell. Your time is up.
...being able to have the human right of shelter and home. And I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creswell. Mr. Keith Person. Keith Person here. I don't see Mr. Person. Next is Robin Muchler. Robin? Going once, going twice. Olivia Minor? Okay. Mike Williams? And then, after Mr. Williams is Les Light, and then David Andre.
Give me a second. I'm actually disabled. Kind of blindish. Hope this pulls up. You see that?
Other way around, sir. There you go. Right.
But I don't know if you see that. It's pretty quick. But we got a prosecutor that you guys, many of you, supported. It says there's no evidence of white supremacy stabbing black people. Well, there it is.
Please note, shouting out from the audience.
This is a lady you guys supported. They just said that recently, "Oh, there's no evidence." So, along with black people getting stabbed at the Capitol, police murdering black people, black men, do you understand our frustrations? That they're all walking away free, supported by the white supremacist system? Can you understand our frustrations? I was going to say a little bit about the Sacramento fraud. I think I counted 18-plus cops just in this little area right here. You know, the city manager's gone. But once you have somebody looking to the fraud of that department, all that money would be going to youth programs. Their fraud's been well documented since the early 80s, the mid 80s. Look up the Sacramento Bee. They did a week-long article about how this department frauds the public. I suggest you guys try to find that article and do something about their fraud. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Light, David Andre, and then Jody Castle. Mr. Light, Mr. Andre, and then Jody Castle. Welcome, Mr. Light.
Evening. All right. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Sacramento Tenants Union. We feel the killing of young unarmed African-American men and other people of color by the police is one particularly obvious and unbearable manifestation of structural racism. The complex of inequalities, inequities, and discriminations, which are structural racism developed from and are perpetuated by the racial wealth gap. The racial wealth gap is chiefly, inescapably, a creation of exclusion from investment in property, most often home property. But where rent is unaffordable, all accruing of wealth is impossible. Where people are displaced by rising rents, the conditions and consequences of structural racism become worse. The racial wealth gap in Sacramento is getting worse. As the general wealth gap is getting worse, the psychological and social impacts of forcing poor and working-class people into locations ever more distant from employment and amenities are ruinous. The psychological and social impacts of increasing housing insecurity should be obvious to everyone here. In California, the fifth-largest economy in the world, perhaps now the richest state, when we figure in the cost of housing on families and individuals, we have perhaps the highest poverty rate in the country. Sacramento has the fastest-rising rent, I think it's been mentioned tonight, in the country. You're educated people. You should be able to draw your own obvious conclusions here.
Thank you, Mr. Light. Our next speaker is David Andre, and then Jody Castle. After Ms. Castle is Trina Allen. Mr. Andre, welcome.
Thank you. We're still killing black people by the police, and you guys are still denying it. You guys are still actually supporting a district attorney, which is covering up for Nazis who stabbed our people in the park. You're still doing that. There are still murders. This is terrible. This needs to stop. I'd like to see a full state investigation into the Sacramento Police Department and why this city continues to kill young black men and continue to deny it. And I'd like to see that before we'll ever, ever go forward here.
Thank you, Mr. Andre. Castle? Castle, going once, going twice. Trina, you're up. Jody Castle, we've called it three or four times. Ms. Allen, you're up. After Ms. Allen is Kim Brandon, Mary Ann Gonzalez Sims, and then General Gar. Ms. Allen.
How you can sit upon this council and listen to the pain of your people week after week, watch the videos of black men being harassed, beaten, hit by cars, shot of their lives stolen by the institution you fund, and then simply call for order, for decorum? It is beyond comprehension. White supremacy always is. For the record, there is no order to murder. It is chaos on the children, on the family. It is chaos on the community. There is no decorum in state terror. What your officers boldly do in front of cameras and even worse, behind closed doors, it isn't calm, it isn't collected, it isn't just. It is violent, dehumanizing, and nightmarish. You are asking your people to quietly acquiesce to their own demise for the goal of your comfort and the comfort of their abusers and before Stephon can even be grieved. Before we can hear what we know is coming, that his death won't be fairly addressed, that his family will feel not only the pain of his loss, but also the acid burn of injustice because there is no justice for murder? Before we can move through that, your officers murder Brandon Smith. He was healthy until your funding killed him, until your lack of action, Howard Chan, killed him. There is no room for your smokescreen reformist nonsense. You are either going to sanction your police department or your community will sanction you. The problem with that, though, is in the interim. The cost of change is paid in the blood of black bodies on the streets of poor communities of color, and you don't care. But you should. Justice for Dejean Flannot, justice for Joseph Mann, justice for Stephon Clark, and justice for Brandon Smith.
Brandon, Ms. Brandon, you're up. After Ms. Brandon is Mary Ann Gonzalez Sims, General Gar, Sonia Lewis. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that we talk about homelessness and families. But God said that our government has been making laws against Him. And one of the laws that they have made against God, prayer-out-of-school law against God, abortion law against God, get rid of your husband, we'll give you a welfare check, law against God. They took the welfare check back. Then they made a law that says, "Guys, we don't need the ladies no more. We'll marry each other." So, now you made them, so women are going to be alienated. Our daughters are not going to have husbands. Lots of our sons ain't going to have wives. Because this kind of situation, it brings the wrath of God upon us. It's going to be more homelessness for the simple reason this. You have made a law against God, and do you not think that God is not going to fight back? Hey, God do not like this. Oh, yeah, you can call me President if you want to. But I got a soul, and you do too. All of us got to leave here. Somebody said, "This ain't about God." Well, the breath that we breathe is about God. It belongs to God. Our heart belongs to God. The blood that runs through our veins belongs to God. I tell you, we better start thinking about the laws you have made. More kids. Let me just say this. I had a young man in my house, and he was looking at me funny. And he kept looking at me, and I said, "What are you looking at?" He said, "You are my role model." Okay, sounds good. What does it mean? He said, "I was brought up with no daddy. I'd never had a daddy. My mother was drunk all the time. And at 13 years old, his mother died. So, he was sent off to some of the family members." How many kids are growing up without daddy or mama? And now they in foster home. And them foster parents are lying, and they doing a whole bunch of stuff. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. After Ms. Brandon, we have four speakers left. Mary Ann Gonzalez Sims, General Gar. I was informed that Sonia Lewis is no longer here. Then James... Oh, she already spoke. Okay. Please, Ms. Sims, please come forward.
I apologize because I'm going to change the subject a little bit. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. My name is Mary Ann Gonzalez Sims from the Colonial Village neighborhood in District 6. I am here to ask you to take action against the increased use of fireworks, both legal and illegal, in District 6 and other districts, including District 2. I heard from a community member there this afternoon. This has become not just an issue during holidays like the Fourth of July, but is now becoming a problem once the weather turns good many nights out of the year. Fireworks have been set off many nights, sometimes as late as 11:00 and 12:00 p.m., waking us up and disturbing the peace. Not only are fireworks a noise hazard, but they are a health and safety hazard. The smoke from fireworks is full of tiny metal particles, such as copper, lithium, barium, and aluminum. And of course, what goes up must come down. Firework debris that falls to the ground contains many toxins and is dangerous. The noise from fireworks traumatizes both domestic pets and wildlife. And it also traumatizes those of us that suffer with post-traumatic stress disorder. Fireworks, fireworks, both legal and illegal, are having a very negative impact on the quality of life in District 6. And as I said, also, I have received messages today from a woman in District 2 that says it's also a big problem there. Because I can find no rational reason for personal fireworks, I also, I very much support the ban of the use of all personal fireworks in Sacramento. In addition to the quality of life issue, I believe it would be much easier to control the legal use of illegal, the illegal use of illegal fireworks if all personal-use fireworks, both legal and illegal, were banned.
Ms. Sims, your time is up.
Okay.
Councilmember Gera would like to respond to your comment. Councilmember?
Thanks, Ms. Sims, for coming out today. Appreciate all your work and for highlighting this issue. I do have our staff here, and I think, Mr., one of our police departments, we can have you connect with them.
Trina, you're not allowed to shout out from the audience. And if you continue, we'll ask you to leave.
We do have, we have started a six-week program to combat the illegal fireworks and go after the folks who are selling the explosives and the ones that are going on. And we'd love to work with you and the neighborhood to help us control the illegal use of those fireworks in that area. fireworks in that area.
I think what'd be great, if we could join such cities as San Francisco, Los Angeles, Davis, many cities around the state that have completely banned.
Ms. Sims, unfortunately, this isn't a time for a back-and-forth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I appreciate Councilmember Gera's comments.
Thank you.
But we have to move on to our final speakers.
We'll have our staff follow up with you on our efforts, so we can make sure that the community is engaged in helping us combat the effort.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jen Rogar. After Ms. Rogar is James Gitcham, and then Andrea Tullis. Thank you, Ms. Rogar. Welcome.
Hello. So many issues tonight that it's very hard for me to be in this room. The energy is overwhelming, and I can't do this every week, because it's, it's, it's what I feel and what I see is, I see a lot of passion on this side, and I see no passion over here. I'm watching the eyes. And, you know, there's all, you know, I'm a teacher, I've said that before, and I don't think anything's going to change, really, until maybe you start looking at your whiteness, and those of you that forgot that you're black. And let me tell you something. I can talk to a cop any way I want. I don't have to put my hands up. I've called a woman cop a bitch to her face, and I'm still alive.
Gera, please, you're not wearing the chamber.
That's part of what I have to tell you. I'm trying to explain that you have to get out of your whiteness. Go walk out here, go to the Community Dinner Project out here every day. I'm a teacher, for 23 years, okay? I got changed early on in life, very early on in life. I'm faced with rent control issues, too. I got kicked out, my apartment went up by $300. Luckily, I have a dad to go to, I have money, I was able to get another apartment. My credit's kind of like not too good, okay? I'm watching you guys. I don't know why there's so many cops here today. It's just, it's going to get worse for you unless you open up your hearts, get out of your patriarchal system that the white women have adopted, and all women have adopted, which has hierarchy in it, and people at the bottom. Do your history. I really, I really pray that you start listening. There's a lot of anger out here, and I, I hope and pray that you have some heart, and it can come back.
Thank you for your comments. I know we believe that Ms. Lewis had left, but is Ms. Lewis still here?
Sarah is making my last book for Anita.
We're not allowed to do that, unfortunately. Sarah, you're welcome to come next week and speak. James Gitcham? Mr. Gitcham, welcome. And then our final speaker will be Andrea Tullis.
How's it going, guys? I don't know where to begin. I don't know who to speak to for some help for any type of situation that can get better. You know, because somebody, you know, Brandon Smith died a couple of days ago, and you only gave him two minutes. His brother was right over here talking, you only gave him less than two minutes to eulogize his own brother. Imagine if he had time to eulogize his own father. How long would it take? But Sacramento, the city of Sacramento is, it's messed up, you know? I mean, walking around, I'm nervous all the time. You know, I'm just nervous all the time. Something's going to happen to me, because I'm a black man walking around, you know, just being homeless, and then just walking around, it's just, it sucks. It's not a safe environment, you know? You guys have, you know, your nice comfy houses, your nice little, you know, sweet places to sleep at, all that. We just don't have that, and we, we need help. You know, rent control, okay, the rent control, that's good, that's a good thing, but just need a place and a situation to live life better. You know, Mayor Steinberg, you know, I didn't want to talk today, but I just wanted to speak to you. I've seen you on the news a lot, I've seen you on the newspapers and all that, but we just need to do better. You know, I appreciate it, brother. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Gitcham. Our last speaker is Andrea Tullis. Is Ms. Tullis here? Ms. Tullis, I don't see you, so that completes our comments on matters not on the agenda. We'll move on to the next item. Madam City Clerk?
Our next, our next item is number 32, a public hearing. The Sacramento Convention Center renovation and expansion project entitlements, NEIR, and authorization to submit financial applications to California Infrastructure and Economic Development Bank for the Sacramento Convention Center renovation and expansion project, and the Community Center Theater project.
Thank you. I just want to begin this hearing tonight by thanking the team, the city team that has worked so hard, as well as all the stakeholders who have spent a long time here, coming to an evening that I hope will be, in some ways, a historic evening in Sacramento. We waited some time, and took our time, actually, especially since I took over this seat in December of, in December of 2016, and I hope that we will...
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but could we have the people who are not part of this presentation leave the chamber? Thank you. Trina?
Excuse me. Wait just a minute, for the chamber to clear. Okay. Anyways, I just want to say that I hope that by the end of this very, very important hearing, that the members of the public will believe, as I do, that this was worth the wait, because this is a very exciting set of additions to our city. I turn it over to Fran Holbacken for your report, and thank you very much, and look forward to a robust discussion here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'm Fran Holbacken with the City Manager's Office, and, you know, I really consider it a privilege to be assigned to this project. These are two very large projects, and there's a third project, and in our city's, you know, our city doesn't do that many projects of this size, so I definitely feel the importance of it, and I just want to thank you for allowing me to be part of this team. My job today is to make some introductions and first tell you about the project goals. So there, we have a very large project team here, a handful of them will speak. So we are going to first, I will just cover quickly the project goals, and then we'll go over the project descriptions and the staff recommendations in front of you tonight. Desmond Parington will handle that portion. And as you know, Desmond has been the workhorse of these projects, he has been the project manager, and I know some of you have said, oh, you know, you did the golden one, Senator, this is probably, you know, this is sort of nothing, it's not nothing, it's just like he's done that, and so surely he can do this one. This is three projects, and two, two of them pretty complicated, so we've asked him to handle multiple projects at once, and he's, he's really done well, with a strong team behind him. We're going to have a financing overview, it will be not, it will not be the final time we talk about the financing. The overview will be done by Brian Wong of the Treasurer's Office. You will have a design presentation by the architect of record on this project, well, I'm not going to call him the Architect of Record, that's it, the architect that you are used to seeing, talk about this to you, Michael Lockwood with Populous. Then you'll see a quick presentation on the design of the theater from Peter Rudy, DLR Westlake, Reed Liskowski, who's been involved with that project. And then we'll talk about the conclusion and next steps. There are a number of staff and consultants here that if you have questions, including our contractors, our environmental team, and staff from the various departments that have been involved. So the whole thing will be roughly 25 to 30 minutes, and we'll ask that you, if you could hold your questions till the end, and then we'll get to you on that. So this, we have some shared goals that, because again, we talked about this as a complex, the Convention Center complex actually is the Memorial Auditorium, the theater, and the Convention Center. So we're creating an event district, we want to curate a memorable experience, celebrate the local character that is Sacramento, maximize our ability to attract events, and capitalize on the synergistic opportunities of the three facilities. We haven't always done that, so this is a goal that is one that we wanted to achieve. Then we had separate goals for the projects. So the Convention Center goals are to maximize the market capture for conventions in Sacramento, maximize the events, the facility, the flexibility for events, and the ability to stack or have multiple events in the, in the Convention Center, improve the guest experience, maintain the ongoing operations, and maximize synergies with the theater. For the theater, we want to, you know there are accessibility issues, both in and around the theater itself. We want to upgrade the patron experience in terms of what they hear, what they see, what they feel when they come into events, improve the performance capabilities, streamline the operations and the function of the theater and the back, the backspace, expand the community involvement in the arts, and transform the appearance of which there's been a lot of debate about the appearance of this complex. So I'm going to turn it over now to Desmond.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg.
Desmond, welcome. Then thank you, sir.
Here's the, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council, I'm Desmond Parington, project manager for the Convention Center, Community Center Theater, and Memorial Auditorium projects. So as Fran mentioned, tonight we're talking about the two of the projects, the Convention Center renovation and expansion project, as well as the Community Center Theater project. The purpose of the project, as Fran noted, is really to revamp the Convention Center and make it more, more functional, and increase the amount of usage of the building, and attract additional conventions. So with that, we will be demolishing the west side of the building, which was built in 1974, and then building a new kitchen, new exhibit halls, a new meeting rooms, and a 40,000-square-foot ballroom that can be subdivided into additional meeting space. On the, on the east side will be, which is the 1996 portion of the building, we will be retaining that building, but building a new east lobby, as well as meeting rooms, and then upgrading the existing facilities so that both sides function at the same, same level, and that are attractive to meeting planners and users. In addition to that, there's a public activity plaza, which will help provide synergies and bring together the theater and the Convention Center, allow a place for the public to gather and enjoy outdoor performances, possibly even farmer's market. There'll be a, the lobby will face there, as well as there'll be a café and the box office. So as you can see, the, this shows the, the new west lobby, the new east lobby, as well as the new exhibit halls, in the darker yellow there, and in the blue. And then at the second level, you've got the new meeting rooms in the dark green, along with additional pre-functioner registration space in blue, and then the new ballroom in purple. With the theater, again, as Fran mentioned, this is a total transformation of the existing building, really to try to open it up and connect not only with the street, but with the community. Right now, it's very inward-focused, and, and, you know, really lacks the performance capabilities of, of new theaters. So we're going to completely revamp the acoustic system, theatrical lighting and rigging. There, we, we hope to have a multipurpose space on, on the exterior, if the, if the current budget allows for, for that. And then there'll be a whole series of improvements for, for folks that come to the theater. So whether it's folks coming to see the symphony, or Broadway Sacramento, or the ballet, or the speaker series, there'll be accessibility improvements, new seating, new lobbies and restrooms, and new concession areas. So you can see in the orange, in the dark orange here, the new areas that are being added on to the building to accommodate the patron needs, with an increased lobby and restroom space, there'll be back-of-house support spaces, and then that shows the location of the, of the planned multipurpose room that could be potentially in the future used for things such as rehearsals or additional performances. On, on the second floor, again, more support space and a brand-new donors lounge as well. Both these projects are expected to have a significant economic impact, and we are fortunate enough to be able to bring forward the ballroom for the Convention Center as part of the current phase of this project, rather than a future phase, thanks to the partnership with the hotel sector here, where they've agreed to assess themselves to provide the funding for that. Based on the economic analyses that we've run, both projects combined are expected to, to bring upwards of about a half-billion dollars in direct and indirect spending, as well as about 2,800 new jobs, both permanent and construct, and temporary jobs in construction. And we're expected to see a, a significant increase in, in events once we've completed the building and got to what we call stabilization, which is about five years after construction. This should provide not only additional TOT revenue to the city as more events come and they stay in hotels, but it should also provide benefits to restaurants and other businesses in the downtown, and it should keep Sacramento competitive with, with our neighbors out in San Jose, in the Bay Area, and down in Southern California, where there've been other upgrades and expansions of their convention centers as well. But before you tonight, we're asking you to take action on the following things. First, there's the certification of the environmental impact report for the Convention Center. Then there is the, the approval of the, the design and the entitlements, which is the finding of general plan consistency for the project, and then, and then authorizing staff to go to the California Infrastructure and Economic Development Bank and submit an application for, for, for funding as part of the project. Similarly, on the theater, we are asking for approval of the design and the entitlements, as well as an IBank loan application as well. And finally, you have a resolution before you that will direct staff to return to City Council with the ordinances necessary to put in place a local hiring and local business involvement program, because it's important on, on projects such as these, that, that local residents benefit from training, as well as construction opportunities, and local businesses do as well. So those will come back before you, before there is any action to move forward on the construction contracts. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael Lockwood with Populous. He's the project director, and has been involved in this project for quite some, some time. He can, will share with you the new designs for the Convention Center.
Thank you, Desmond. Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, thank you for having me again. It's been a pleasure to work on this project, and yes, Mayor Steinberg, it's been a long time coming. We've really enjoyed, and we've really appreciated the opportunity to work on this really important project for you guys, and I appreciate when you came into office and, and took the reins and looked at the design more closely and the economic impact, because this job, this project has to be a huge economic impact and driver for your city, and, and we think it is definitely that. So I'm here, I'm Michael Lockwood with Populous, I'm here with Carrie Rezak. Carrie, hi, she's our project manager. We are also supported by a tremendous team back home, and we're excited to show you the renderings of this project and what this will actually look like and do for the city of Sacramento. These collective projects, they represent an urban and architectural transformation. You can see the Convention Center on the left, and the Community Center Theater on the right, and one thing that we focused a lot of our efforts on is developing a new public outdoor space along the K Street spine. So if you know the project today, the Convention Center sits squarely on, on K Street, and what we're going to do is, through the demolition of the west hall and the west lobby, we'll open up the K Street Plaza, it will be almost three times the size it is today, and accommodate large outdoor events. So we're building the Convention Center larger, but we're building it vertically to allow for more public open space around the project, to really activate the site and connect people from downtown to midtown. Here's a view from 13th and K Streets. The existing art piece you see in the foreground, and what you're looking at is the expanded K Street Plaza, much more open, much more accommodating for folks moving through your city. On the left-hand side, you'll see the new west lobby. It's almost twice the size as the existing west lobby to accommodate larger conventions and accommodate the functionality that really needs to happen to allow this Convention Center to do what it needs to do to, to gain the events that we want to have come to the building. And... In the upper-left-hand side of the image, you can see in the black is the new 40,000-square-foot ballroom. It will be on the second level above the exhibition hall. It will provide views to this intersection, and there's a window there into the ballroom. So, when you're walking down K Street, you'll be able to look up into the lobby and also the ballroom and get a view of events that are happening within the convention center. Today, the building is very closed off. It's not easy to see what's going on in the facility, and we want to open it up and provide a lot of transparency to all the spaces. Moving over to the intersection of 13th and J Streets, this is a very important corner. A lot of people travel along J Street, getting, coming into the city. So, the building is civic, it's dynamic, it has a strong presence here on this important intersection. We want it to be iconic, we don't want it to be overwhelming. We're also in the process of hiring and looking for a public artist to install a tremendous piece of public art on this corner. And no, we are not moving the rabbit from the airport, if anybody's wondering. But we wanted to give you a sense of how transformative public art can be on this important corner. So, coming down J Street, the building stacks up vertically, as I mentioned, and when it does that, we accommodate much larger sidewalks to accommodate pedestrians moving through the city along J Street, but then also down 13th Street going to the new west lobby. So, the art piece here is something iconic, both for residents and guests to the convention center. It becomes a wayfinding element that allows people to come to this location and move to the building, but also if you're just passing by in your car, it's something that you can point out to your friends and take advantage of. So, we think it's a great opportunity for a significant piece of public art around this project. Moving over to the 15th Street and K intersection, this is the new east lobby. So, today, there's a, the Panatoni Building is here, it's a small office building. That building will come down, and we'll build a new east lobby, which will allow the convention center to host simultaneous events. So, one of the most important aspects of this project is the ability for the building to host simultaneous events and stacking events to gain the maximum economic impact possible for the center. So, the new east lobby allows us to do that. It gives you direct access into the exhibit halls at this end of the building. It also screens the loading docks at this end, and I think this connects to all of the great things that are going on between, on K Street between 15th and 21st and on down into midtown. So, guests will be able to leave this lobby and enjoy all the things that midtown has to offer. Back into the K Street Plaza, here's a view, a dusk view, that shows the transparency of the new building. We want people to look into this building, we want guests inside of the building to look out. So, the new west lobby on the left-hand side, again, almost twice the size of the existing lobby, you'll see on the right-hand side of the image, there are new meeting rooms stacked above the administration spaces. And also, at the ground level, will be a new café and ticketing box office. So, we're looking at the convention center to provide a lot of activation for this plaza to make it a very robust public space. So, whether you're coming here for an event or you're just passing through, it does feel like a safe, active place that is really engaging with the public. Here's a view of the K Street Plaza during the daytime. Desmond mentioned that there are all kinds of opportunities. We've really worked hard to create spaces that are dedicated for conventions, so you can imagine exhibitions spilling out to the outside. You can imagine community events like Farmer's Market taking place in the plaza. And there's also space, and you'll hear the architects from the theater team talk about an outdoor amphitheater to, again, activate the plaza from the theater side as well. So, there are multiple opportunities to get people engaged into the space, open it up. Not only can you move through it, but also have events that draw people to it, much like the new plaza around the Golden One Center downtown. So, moving inside the building, here's the new west lobby. And again, one of the biggest issues that we solved in this solution was to fix the wayfinding. Years ago, we did a study and experience out on the building. The convention center today is very confusing when you move in, there's not great accessibility to all of the spaces. To get to other parts of the building, you need to walk all the way around it. So, this new solution with the two east and west lobbies is really simple, really straightforward. You can come into the west lobby, you can move right into the exhibit halls, or you can move up the escalators and stairs and move across the building over to the east lobby. So, very straightforward, easy access to all the spaces to really accommodate events and multiple conventions. Over to the east lobby here, you'll see, again, new space, bigger space to allow for registration, all the basic things that a convention needs to operate within the building. Just to our left here, outside of the glass, is 15th Street, another smaller drop-off plaza for buses to arrive and deliver folks coming to this end of the building. To the right would be access to the existing exhibit halls, and then up the escalators and stairs would be access to the existing meeting and ballrooms on the east side of the building. So, again, accommodations for events, beautiful spaces, but wide open, lots of light, lots of transparency, and accommodating for conventions to use the space as they desire. So, again, back to the aerial view, we really think this is a fantastic project. I'm going to hand it over to Peter Rudy with DLR Westlake-Reddell Scousy to talk about the design of the Community Center Theater, and I'd be happy to answer questions after the final presentation is done.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Thank you. Very impressive.
I just want to thank you all for inviting us here today to be, to present to you the Community Center Theater renovation. I also want to thank Desmond and his team, Fran as well. This has been an ongoing process that's taken a lot of time and effort, and I think with time come good things. Just to go forward here, just to start this out, we always like to start with an overarching idea. I've been doing designing theaters, performing arts centers for communities like Sacramento for a number of years, and I was taught early that great cities are defined by their cultural institutions and also by the community amenities that it provides. You know, one of our goals here in Sacramento is really to try to find what those real true goals were. Early in our process, with the team, we actually had a series of engagement meetings with our stakeholders to review some of these design principles that would guide us. So, you can see the four there. Overall, these design principles guided the entire process. So, it was really a way for us to try to find a transformation for the community theater, bringing a way to open it up to the city of Sacramento, but also to pedestrians walking by, to embrace it and connect it to, back to the city, to expose it to the arts and to the public, and to also connect with our neighbor, the convention center, with a really beautiful public space. As Fran mentioned, we do have a series of goals that we, when we start out each of our design meetings, we go back to these goals to be sure that we're actually hitting all these things. So, number one was to upgrade the patron experience, number two is to improve the performance capacities, and three, to also expand the venue, to maybe find an opportunity to create another space, perhaps a community use space, which we're calling multipurpose So, from a conceptual standpoint, along with the principles and goals, we developed a conceptual basis rooted in the importance of trees in the city of Sacramento. We looked to a lot of the characteristics that one finds as you walk around the streets of Sacramento, particularly the way that light is filtered through canopies, and how that really creates an identity to the place. So, we asked ourselves, is there a way to bring some of this character and identity to this transformation of the theater? I'm going to show you a series of before and what we're proposing. So, this first is a view looking down L Street towards the west. So, as you know, the existing building is really opaque, and it's pulled back from the street. I'd say that many people don't even know what occurs inside that building. So, one of our challenges was, how do we really begin to open that up and expose the arts that live within it? We looked at ways, again, back to the city of trees that Sacramento is, is there a way we can bring the trees in and create a really beautiful entry courtyard where patrons can be meted and greeted? You can be dropped off here at this front L Street. Patrons could then go into this really new and transparent theater lobby. So, basically, all the fantastic amenities inside the existing theater, we brought a connection back to the street so people understood what was happening within there. We also designed an opportunity for this new multipurpose space. And this is a space where you can imagine arts occurring on a daily basis, whether it's rehearsals in the daytime for a dance troupe, a community gathering within its four walls, maybe in the evening, it's a rental space, bringing in additional funding for the city to help offset some of the operational cost. These are all real things that performing arts centers really do need to deal with in creating new spaces. This is a view from L Street looking east. This is really from the corner here. What's existing is, there's a lot of cars being dropped off here, there's a buffer that really separates the building from the street. What we focused on doing is removing those barriers and really create, again, a direct visibility of what's happening inside the building to the street, so that, again, there's an opportunity to bring some of these ideas of the city of trees with light filtering through the canopy. We actually even took that same idea with the team and looked at ways that we can create an overhead canopy of the entryway. And since you all know this corner faces southwest, we get a lot of afternoon sun. So, we looked at ways to actually begin to bring in filtered light through that canopy. And if you can imagine some of that dapple light kind of filtering across the floor, again, trying to bring people into this Sacramento building. Going on here, this is the K Street entryway, so this is off the plaza. You know, this side of the building really, again, doesn't have that direct connection to the plaza, you cannot see what's happening within it, and there's really no direct connection with the K Street axis that serves as a connection point for Sacramento. So, our team worked really hard with also the convention center team to create a really beautiful plaza space that's not just an aesthetic space, but also a very functional place, a place where you can imagine an amphitheater sitting there, where you can be sitting in the afternoon, or maybe in the evening, watching a movie being projected on the side of the building. You can imagine music, you know, really encapsulating that space. Perhaps there's an opportunity to bring in more of a pedestrian aspect and a place to sit at a café perched along that porch. And all this is really being framed underneath this new welcoming porch that would offer, again, some more shade to the plaza, especially in the afternoon. So, again, I think an overall theme of what you're seeing here is that we're trying to find ways to bring some of the arts within the building outside to really activate what's Moving back to the, to L Street and the lobby spaces, again, trying to really connect back to the street, this is an issue right now where you, you can see the kind of the drop-off here, walking into lobby or to the box office space. We looked at ways to bring down the lobby level to street level. So, you can imagine coming up into this space, it's actually completely ADX accessible. It's a, the universal design was really followed through every step of the process, so you can find a way from the street level to this lobby level and up a series of ramps up to the main concourse level. So, at this, with this new lobby, also comes a lot of opportunity. New concessions could be at this level upstairs, a lounge space that all overlooks the beautiful park across the way, and again, kind of connecting the vibrancy of the lobby spaces to outside. A big part of performing arts, especially in its lobby spaces, is how do you actually orchestrate the process and the procession into lobby spaces and create that sense of arrival? Going to the theater is not necessarily like going to a ballgame or to anywhere else. It's really about getting dressed up and having that kind of special, that special place. We worked really hard with our team to find the right sense of balance of materials and really kind of bring in that sense of importance and just specialness of this lobby space.
It's a great presentation, honestly, but if we can just, let's get through so we can open it up for public testimony and discussion, please.
You bet.
Thank you.
I'll just finish up here with a couple shots. I'll do a little slide slam here. This is a new rendering of the theater space, of the theater lobbies as you walk up the promenades. This is the existing theater with its current materials. We're proposing new kind of warm materials in the space, new lighting to really kind of, again, create a level of intimacy into this theater space. And finally, the restrooms also, we added a number of new restrooms, including 57 women's stalls and 35 men's stalls, a place for you to get dressed, to look at your, you know, you know, just to wrap it up.
As many women's stalls as men's stalls?
Actually, twice as many, so we added the twice number of women's stalls as to men's stalls.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Excellent. That is exciting.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. Brian Wong with the chair's office. It's my pleasure this evening to really provide a brief overview of the financing structure. As Fran mentioned, conceptually, we'll be coming back in mid-September for the formal approval of the issuance of TOT revenue bonds. When we come back, we'll have a much more robust discussion, include a number of members of the financing team for an in-depth analysis and market perspectives and other things. Just at a very quick overview, we're anticipating for the overall financing package for the theater, the auditorium, and convention center is a mix of both transient occupancy tax or TOT revenue bonds, as well as loans from the IBank. One of the resolutions in your package this evening are, is the consideration for staff to be able to apply for loans under two programs. One of the questions that comes up is, what is the source of repayment for these debt obligations? Is the general fund going to be liable for any of the obligations? Are we on hook for anything? And the answer is no. We're only looking at a gross pledge of TOT revenue. And what that means is that we have TOT collections, we have under the city code, a portion that goes to the general fund, which is 2% of the 12%, and then we have a portion under the city code that goes to the city of Sacramento. So, the residual is what we are pledging for purposes of both repayment of the TOT revenue bonds, as well as the repayment of the IBank loans. So, it's important to note that, again, the general fund is not going to be impaired, and they're not on the hook for any perspective for repayment of any of the obligations. Conceptually, we're looking at really several different tiers of financings. We'll get more.
Could have Councilman Shiner as a quick.
Just a very quick clarifying question. So, if we hit a recession and TOT drops beyond where, so it couldn't cover the debt payments, is the general fund then obligated? Or?
So, on my next slide, Councilmember Shiner, we have kind of three different financing tools to kind of safeguard that. One is the typical fully funded bond reserve. So, as part of the issuance of bonds, we have that to safeguard.
Brian, will you bring up that slide while you're talking about it?
Sure, absolutely. So, the, really the three bullets on the bottom, the fully funded debt service reserve, so that preserves the ability for bondholders to be made whole. In the event that there's a drop-off in TOT and there's the potential for the inability to pay bondholders, we can tap the reserve fund that's held by the trustee. There are two other considerations for the repayment of the obligation. Again, as I mentioned, because TOT is a gross revenue pledge, what that means is that the city bears the risk for operations and maintenance of the facility. So, debt service is paid first, and then staff costs and other capital costs are paid subsequent to the debt service. So, one of the, one of the tools we built into there to safeguard in the event that there's a downturn in TOT are the second and third bullet from the bottom, which is maintaining at least $5 million in the community center fund. And what that does is, it hopes to provide a little bit of stability, and in the event there are downturns in the TOT, helps to preserve the ability to pay for O and M costs. Furthermore, we're also building in there, in the structure, what's known as a revenue surplus account. What that means is that in any given year, if there's excess above what the need is for debt service, we're kind of setting that aside for a rainy day, essentially, so that in the event there is a downturn in the TOT, rather than having to curtail O and M, that rainy day fund can help to supplant the shortfall, rather than having the general fund or some other source covering that deficiency. So, those are the, we're, we'll be coming back in September to identify the size. We're still working with Morgan Stanley and our bond council to determine the appropriate size, but we are looking at kind of multiple financing tools to help ensure that the general fund doesn't need to step in to. fund doesn't need to step in to cover any shortfall in, in O and M or, or other, other things. A couple other quick notes under the key credit features. Again, we are looking at kind of a multiple types of tiers. The senior, and the purpose of that is really to, number one, meet the project need. And furthermore, it's to identify the, kind of the greatest depth of investors. So we have both the senior lien TOT bonds and those will be on parity, which means the same repayment stream as the I Bank loans. And then we have subordinate bonds. We'll get into more details in September, but I just want to introduce the concepts that we are looking at kind of multiple different series of bonds targeting different investor groups. We are looking at investment grade ratings, so that feeds into the overall financing rate, which was on the previous slide. We are estimating a rate of 4.8%. What that rate does is it actually includes an interest rate buffer of about half a percent. Because there's ongoing discussion by the feds of one, possibly two rate hikes before the end of this year, we wanted to be a little bit conservative for purposes of modeling and pro forma analysis that can we afford this? So the 4.8 includes an interest rate buffer, which we hope will come down when we price in, in October or so. So based on those projections, we're looking at roughly 367 million or so in par amount. And then for the project proceeds, it's a little over 343 million. Again, those are estimates. Just, I'm not going to go through every single one of these things, but I just want to highlight a couple of items on, on the, on the schedule that are of note. September 13th, there are two things that are really important for the mayor and council to be aware of. One is that's when we expect to receive the ratings on the long-term TOT revenue bonds. And more importantly, that's when we expect to come back to, before this council to seek authorization to issue the bonds. And that's, again, when we expect to have the full financing team, Morgan Stanley, our financial advisor, bond council, to answer any and all questions that the council may have. September 25th is another key date. That's when I Bank's consideration before their board for the two applications. One for an application under ISERF, which is the Infrastructure State Revolving Fund Loan, and the second being clean. So that's when we should have a formal determination of whether or not it's, they have approved our request of up to $55 billion in loan, loans. And finally, the most important is, the end of October is when we're targeting the close of the TOT revenue bonds. One of the things we've been working on in partnership with, with I Bank is to have a roughly simultaneous close, which means we will probably be closing the I Bank as well as the TOT revenue bonds within a few days. So we haven't obviously penciled that out yet, but we probably expect a late close, late October close for, for I Bank. At this time, I'll turn it over to Fran for any recommendations and, and final steps.
So I'm just going to remind you, the staff recommendations today are to certify the EIR, approve the design and the general plan consistency and other design-related entitlements. Give us the authority to submit the, to I Bank applications, one for the theater, one for the convention center, and then direct us to return with an ordinance establishing the local hiring and local business programs. To put it into context, around September, Brian talked to you, there was the 13th and the 25th. You'll get, this will be the actual actions with the details on the project financing. And then sometime this summer, we'll be back with the local hiring and local business program. And then twice, we'll be back with construction contracts, one for the theater and one for the convention center. The convention center will come likely in November and then the theater in January. And just to remind you, my birthday is November 30th, so I'm expecting all these things to be in place before my birthday as a big present to myself. Just remember that. So that was just a wrap up to help you remember what our next steps are.
Thank you very much again, Fran. Really appreciate it. We do have a lot of public testimony here and we want to hear it. Certainly heard a lot of other public testimony tonight. And you've all waited very patiently and thank you. So let us begin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have 18 speakers signed up. The first is Doug Warren, then Alex Smith, then Chris Leon.
Mr. Warren?
Good evening, Mayor, council members and all the staff and everybody that worked so hard to get this across the finish line. My name is Doug Warren and I oversee three hotel properties in Sacramento, two in District Three and one in District Four. I'd like to express my full support for the expansion of the convention center. The convention center serves our region's most lucrative tourism industry, meetings and conventions. This expansion is essential to keeping our largest and most impactful conventions in Sacramento. It also opens the doors for new and additional business that will only further bolster our local economy and provide that TOT that is so needed for other programs. As a hotelier, I can say without hesitation that this project will also have a tremendous impact on our industry, helping to both maintain our existing flow of visitors while bringing even more convention attendees to our region with our new ability to stack events. This expansion will also support local hotel jobs and tourism, employment across the region, and most likely expand hotels themselves. Thank you for all your hard work, again, those of you especially behind the scenes, staff, city council, all the questions you've asked, for your engagement, detailed research that went into this project. We know that it will deliver great things to this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Alex Smith and Chris Leon.
Good evening and thank you for hearing me. Please keep this public work open to fair and competitive bidding. The building trades will put every pressure on you to take control of this work. I am a certified small business by the state of California. I am a commercial contractor and I have been a woman-owned business for 15 years and I am not signatory to a union. I have completed projects up to $1 million. I have very experienced employees, a great reputation for quality work and a great safety record. My employees work for me because they choose to get paid for their merit. On prevailing wage jobs, I pay my employees the same wages and benefits as the unions pay. I've had employees leave me for work, to work for union contractors because of the promises they were given, but in my 15 years, I have only had one employee that has not come back to work for me. They told me they got tired of sitting on the bench and wanted to work again. I have attempted to bid public works for the last 10 years. I have attended many outreach events where I was told that the doors were open for me. I went through your certification processes with many other minority contractors. I attended many pre-bid conferences and many job walks where I was encouraged to bid by the union contractors who needed my minority and small business certifications, only to be blocked by hidden language in the labor agreements. I stopped going to outreach events and so did the other minority contractors. Building trade, building trades agreements are discriminate, are discriminatory against me. All qualified contractors should be allowed to bid on public work. I am one of thousands of businesses that keep your economy healthy. We are not the underground economy. We are your economy. We train your local workforce every day.
Ms. Smith, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes?
What, what's the hidden language in the contract that blocked you?
The hidden language is that they say that there is only a certain number of our own workforce that can work on these projects. And over that, we have to go to the unions to get their apprentices. And if they don't send us any apprentices or they send us challenged apprentices, we have to do that work with our journey workers. And that can put us out of business because we have to pay journey workers to everyone. And we cannot bid that way.
Okay, thank you.
This will be a subject of a future city council discussion. And what we're, of course, interested here in this city is local hiring, especially local hiring from people in our neighborhoods. And I have a different perspective than you, but I respect your coming to the council and expressing yourself. And please come back when we discuss this again, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Chris Leon, then Mike Testa, then Deborah Mouse.
Good evening. I'm here to speak to local hire and that I'm an instructor for America, Associated Builders and Contractors. And we have partnered with Sacramento's Salvation Army to train your local workforce in construction. So we've had two cohorts so far and we've trained approximately 20 students in OSHA Ten Safety and Construction and Craft Construction, Labor, Building Trades, Electricians, et cetera. Our objective is to take the hard to serve, people that have had difficulties and barriers, you know, homeless, maybe past drug addiction, people that haven't had the privilege maybe of higher income wage and perhaps some legal barriers and get them into the working force. So we've had great success so far. I actually had a student come through our apprenticeship program from the Salvation Army. I taught him when he was at the Salvation Army. So he is now actually earning $26 an hour. And another woman that was a homeless woman who's now earning $18 an hour in construction. And actually, I had another student that just started our apprenticeship program. So we also offer a pathway into apprenticeship as well as craft training side. We presently have another third cohort starting in September, so we hope to train with the Salvation Army in Sacramento. So we hope to continue to train your workforce and please afford them the opportunity to work on this new building. That would be a really nice segue. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Mike Testa, then Deborah Mouse, then Richard Markison.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, City Manager Chan. My name is Mike Testa and I'm the president and CEO of Visit Sacramento. On behalf of our Board of Directors, I'd like to express our appreciation for the extent to which Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Hanson and the city staff conducted due diligence to ensure that the city would make the smartest investment possible in the convention center and community center theater. If you adopt staff, staff's recommendations tonight, your action will send a loud signal to the largest convention clients in Sacramento and the national convention industry that our city is serious about competing for market share on the West Coast. Meetings and conventions are the largest driver of tourism in the Sacramento region. All of the research and planning confirms that expansion of the convention center complex will provide a significant return on the city's investment with more conventions, more meetings and more robust commercial activity. As you know, a critical piece of the updated plan for the convention center is the inclusion of a 40,000 square foot ballroom in the project's first phase. Simply put, a second ballroom will allow us to target bigger conventions and allow two groups to occupy the building at the same time. As a reflection of the value of this investment and its importance to our largest convention clients, Sacramento's hotels stepped up with a commitment to raise $40 million to pay for it. Cities do not invest in tourism infrastructure to benefit the tourist. Rather, they invest in it to drive economic impact to benefit residents. Whether or not our local residents ever step foot in the building, I firmly believe that they will directly benefit from the activity and visitor spending that it generates. Thank you.
Next speaker is Deborah Mouse, then Richard Markison.
I will let you know that Richard Markison had to leave for a flight, so he will not be speaking. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, council members. My name is Deborah Mouse. I am the Executive Vice President of the Plumbing, Heating and Cooling Contractors of California. Plumbing, Heating and Cooling Contractors is the oldest trade association in the United States and we've been in California for 118 years. Our members deliver comfort, health and safety of our water, sanitation and heating and air conditioning systems. We congratulate you on this fantastic project and I would like to address the local hire element of the convention center package and encourage you to ensure that it is truly local hire. PHCC and the other construction, construction trade merit shops operate apprenticeship training programs throughout the greater Sacramento region, including us. We have a school here just north of downtown Sacramento. Truly like local hire would give these tradesmen and women opportunities to compete for the convention center construction jobs irrespective of the labor affiliation they may choose. PHCC appreciates and supports the goals to provide opportunities to communities that traditionally have not had access to the trades or are underrepresented in the trades. A few example of PHCC's efforts. We operate a ride and decide program where we allow students to shadow contractors in summertime jobs while they try out the trades as a career choice. We have a program called Copper for Kids in which PHCC operates in conjunction with social services programs locally here, Sierra Forever Families, wherein we scrap copper and donate the proceeds to fund foster kids and finding forever families. We strongly encourage the council to consider access to all regardless of their labor affiliation in these agreements that typically are titled workforce and local hire that have resulted in agreements with the labor unions. Thank you.
Next speaker is Richard Markison, then Eric Christian. Richard's gone. Eric Christensen, then Nicole Goring.
Mr. Christensen, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eric Kristin. Always get the sweetest pronunciation of it. It's Kristin, not Christensen. Eric Kristin with the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. Tonight, the issue of local hire has been brought up and it's unfortunate that it's being used to ultimately get what was gotten on the Memorial Auditorium project, which is a project labor agreement. Through a Public Records Act request, we were able to attain emails that were back and forth between Mr. Fong, former city councilman, Mr. Wade with Kitchell and with your, Dennis Cardo, who represented the unions. And one of them from February 8th said, "In Mr. Wade, to Mr. Cardo's and Mr. Fong, this doesn't work for us, the city and stakeholders involved. Non-union firms will not bid the project knowing they'll need to sign a CWTA agreement and a Placable Union Master Agreement. We've notified the city of your recent change and approach and are awaiting their direction. If we want to return to the standard, it would be to eliminate the CWTA, which is another acronym for PLA, altogether as originally planned for Memorial." Unfortunately, behind the scenes, out of public view, a PLA was agreed to. What's going to happen is if, if local hire is used to get a PLA placed on this, the very local workers, 80% of whom are non-union in the construction industry that you're seeking to pursue, are more than likely not going to bid and work on this project. What you get in local hire is simply a promise that an effort will be made to hire locally. In the auditorium project, it simply says, "Our goal is to get 30% of workers locally," meaning the city or the county. 30% is a ridiculously low number. What is that being based on? What are your previous projects getting as far as local hire? The unions, that, that's all the local hire language is in the Memorial Auditorium PLA. That's all it says, that we will give our utmost effort to hire locally. That's all you get in exchange for a project labor agreement. So I look forward to speaking to you more on this, but thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Nicole Goring, then Jamison Parker, then Heidi Schmidt.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the Sacramento City Council. Nicole Garing, Community and Government Relations Director for Associated Builders and Contractors, California, Northern California Chapter. We've got over 100 members in this district representing thousands of workers and their families throughout the region and just wanted to speak with you in regards to the local hire issue tonight. We appreciate and support the project and we would like to have the entire community to be able to, to build the project and be involved. We'd like to be a stakeholder in the process of developing the local programs. You heard about one of our programs earlier where we are working to bring homeless and disadvantaged people into the workforce and provide them with, with work and opportunities. And we'd like for them to be able to work on this project. You learned we're going to be starting an additional cohort in September and, and this is a, a solution, a possible solution to, to something that could be for, for this particular project. So I would encourage you to, to look at that and include all, all of the stakeholders in the process to develop something really wonderful for the community. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Jamison Parker, then Heidi Schmidt.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jamison Parker with the Midtown Association. We were here with you a little over a year ago when we were discussing the design of the, the convention center. We're here again to reiterate and reinforce our position of support for this project tonight. tonight. As I've stated before, Midtown generates about 50 percent of our sales tax in restaurant-related or entertainment-related activity. As stated in the staff report, convention attendees actually spend about 50 percent of their income on either food and beverages, retail, or entertainment. With a well-managed and expanded convention center and CCT, we're going to see additional visitors into our central city, further driving demand for our local businesses, our restaurants, our nightlife in Midtown. That economic activity is actually only going to be enhanced by easy-to-use, accessible transportation. The recently implemented bike-share system is important. Proposed streetcar line is going to only enhance those efforts. Lastly, I want to say thank you to the staff. Some of the words that the architect mentioned regarding the eastern end of the convention center having a well-connected eastern end, the convention center is really going to open up the connectivity from downtown to Midtown and further kind of promote that synergy that we have. So, with that, I say we urge you to vote aye on this item, and keep moving this report.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Heidi Schmidt, then Christian Rake.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here again. This is my third time.
Well, third time's a charm.
Yeah, I hope so. I've been working at the convention center 25 years. I don't know if I said my name. I'm Heidi Schmidt. I'm a banquet captain there. I'm representing more than 100 workers who rely on our job at classic catering as our primary source of income. We love providing great service to visitors that come to Sacramento and the convention center. I know that I have a secure job, a good income, access to good benefits, and retirement because of my job, and I can't afford to lose that. We are going to struggle while the convention center is closed, but we need to know that our jobs will be waiting for us when we get back. I want the opportunity to continue to serve those same guests that we see year after year. We'd ask the city to take the steps to ensure that our jobs are still our jobs when we return.
They will be.
Okay.
I want to say it. They will be. I mean, I know that there are some issues to work out about the transition period itself.
Okay.
But, and you know, it was, we were very, there were some discussions about working with some outside companies. That is not the course of action that we are taking here. We appreciate and honor the work that you do.
Thank you.
And we will work with you.
And I also wanted to say that we are excited about the convention center expansion, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you to all your members.
Next speaker is Christian Rack, then Michael Alt.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, and city staff. And Mayor Steinberg, we very much appreciate those comments, and we want to make sure that the proper steps are taken to ensure that's what actually takes place. And I absolutely believe and appreciate many comments from the city council in the past in support of our members stating exactly that. We're in a situation where the opening of the convention center, or the reopening of the convention center post renovations is going to be after the expiration of the current agreement that the city has with the current operator. And we have a very good working relationship with Center Plate. In some ways, the easiest way to make sure there's a smooth transition is if Center Plate remains after the fact, but the city might decide to go in a different direction. And what we want to make sure, and this is ideally before this comes back to you in September, is that there is a labor peace policy and a worker retention policy in place to ensure that if, when the renovations occur and the workforce drops to a much, much smaller number, that when it reopens later, if it reopens with a different operator, that our folks have a fair process to organize and their jobs are waiting for them. So, we look forward to communicating with the council and with city staff about steps to make that happen, and we definitely appreciate the ongoing public statement from many members of the council in support of our members retaining their work. They're very, very excited to work at the new facility. They just want to make sure they have the chance. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Michael Alt, then Randall Seland.
Mayor, members of council, new fathers. It's good to be here. One of the things that we wanted to communicate was not just our importance for this facility, but really the importance for economic development in Sacramento. I think we realize expansion of this facility is overdue. We think that the process has been fair. We think the process has been inclusive, but we've also seen a number of investments of these centers throughout the U.S. that are our competitors. If we don't continue to make these investments, if we don't continue to stay with the competition, we're going to lose economic momentum. We've seen tremendous investment momentum off of the Golden One Center. One of the things that we've seen from that is the ability to capitalize on that momentum. We are, people are looking at Sacramento in a different way than they have looked in the past. We know this project is expensive. We think that the visitors that come to this facility support more than just the facility. You've heard earlier, they support new restaurants, they support existing infrastructure, they support our retail, and if we're going to continue to make this truly the center of economic development for this region and make this a special place in downtown, we've got to continue this momentum. So, we encourage you to move forward with this and ask for your support. Thank you.
Next speaker is Randall Seland, then Brian Larson, then Lanell Walker.
Mayor, city council members. My name is Randall Seland, and my family and I own four restaurants in the city of Sacramento. My family, two kids, four grandkids, all live in the city of Sacramento. We are huge supporters of the city of Sacramento, and therefore, just because we have a big restaurant at the corner of 12th and K. doesn't mean we're all for the convention center. We're for anything that makes Sacramento great. We love Sacramento. Sacramento is the best city in this region. Obviously, it is about all this region, but here's the deal. I'm here just to express my family's support for the convention center expansion. You know, the convention center serves our region's critical and lucrative tourism business. I got to tell you, those of you who haven't been anywhere around Wine Symposium in January, it's the busiest week of the year for Sacramento. It's not Valentine's Day, it's not New Year's Eve, it's not any other holiday that brings people in. It's Wine Symposium. So, the more events you do here, the more business is going to come in, the more revenue is going to be generated, and, you know, the city has a large investment going right now. You've built a lot of stuff. You've got so much going on here. You've got great housing going on, and there's so much to offer in Sacramento. We've got to continue the growth. And just, I just want to tell you, thanks a lot for doing everything you're doing. You're doing a fabulous job. I thought the new bike lanes would be, they wouldn't work. I love them. They're fantastic. My wife now goes, "I want to ride my bike downtown," so thank you again for that. And, you know, it's just, we need, you know, we're getting, we have all this private investment in housing and retail as well as influx of a ton of people from all over California and all over the nation into Sacramento. We need to bookend our K Street Mall with a world-class convention center. And actually, on another note, after sitting through the last three hours of, we'll say some interesting testimony, I just got to tell you that, you know, with the amount of tax dollars you're going to start to be generating with everything you guys are doing in this town, think of all the extra money you'll get from my restaurants, we'll be able to supply people with the services they're looking for. So, please vote yes on it. Thanks again.
Excellent, Randall. Thanks for all you do for our city.
Oh, no, it's, this is the place, I'm telling you, Mayor.
Next speaker is Brian Larson, then Lanell Walker.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. First, I wanted to thank Mayor Steinberg and Councilman Hanson particularly for the very interactive process we had. I think, you know, we had a good vision in 2011 when I started on this process, and Mr. Lockwood will remember that I was the chairman of the Convention Bureau Board at the time when we did an RFP and selected populace, and we've had a great relationship ever since. But I just really wanted to thank the mayor and council for that process, which I think led us to a really great project. I just wanted to throw a couple of interesting numbers out that occurred to me that I think the public would love to hear. This has been one of the best investments in the last convention center expansion that the city's ever made. At the time, we spent 110 million at that time, 1993. TOT was $9 million, and we had 800 first-class hotel rooms in downtown. Now, we have 2,000 first-class hotel rooms with more in the pipeline. TOT is now 30 million, so it's tripled, and it paid for all of the debt service and all the operating costs of that center since then, and we anticipate further growth. The second thing I wanted to point out that I think is incredibly important, the hospitality sector is the second-largest employer in this region, and it is the most upwardly mobile industry, which provides jobs across economic sectors and allows people with less opportunity to gain opportunity and to have careers in management and ownership in this industry, and I think that's incredibly important. We hire across all sectors, and we really appreciate the opportunity that we have to do that. We're a very diverse industry, and we think that's going to really be enhanced by this investment that you've made. And again, I just wanted to thank you all for your very hard work, Fran and Desmond and all the staff for the many hours that we've all spent on this project. I wholeheartedly support this, and I encourage you to vote yes. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Lanell Walker, then Scott Vandenberg.
Mayor Steinberg and the city council members, thank you for listening. I'm Lanell Walker, and I'm the priest in charge, sorry, at St. Paul's Episcopal Church on 15th and J., and it is the oldest church here in Sacramento, formed in 1849. And we're diagonally across from Memorial Auditorium, and we're adjacent to the convention center. And we're excited about the renovation and expansion. What's good for our neighbors is going to be good for us. But I put a pose on the sheet just to be able to list our concerns. And one of our concerns is for the historic Stanford window and all the stained glass windows that are in St. Paul's, that with the demolition of the building to the south and the construction to the west of us, that the integrity of those windows be maintained. We have a historic tracker organ. We're the only one on the west side of the Mississippi that has one that functions, and we're concerned about that and the pipes and the failure of the plaster that's over the organ, the disruption of the exterior masonry and mortar from the vibration, joints in the stone, masonry joints, effects on the foundation, cracks in the interior plaster, noise on Sundays from delivery and construction. And I'm not fully sure I understand this, but I anticipate some loss of parking on 15th. So, I am responsible for the integrity of this historic gem, and I am looking forward to receiving assurances about our concerns and that they get addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Pastor, appreciate it.
Next speaker is Scott Vandenberg, then Lorraine Brown, then Kathleen Gilley is our final speaker.
Vandenberg, let me, I want to begin before you testify here, okay? Just say something. I want to thank you for your leadership in bringing an additional 40 to 50 million dollars to this project by taking the lead in having the hoteliers, the hotel association impose an additional user fee. In the end, and I'm going to describe the dollars during my comments at the end here, we were able to accomplish the original vision of the project with an even better design, including the ballroom, with significant resources left over to invest in other destination projects for Sacramento, and you played the lead role. So, thank you. Your two minutes are up, by the way.
Well, thank you very much. That means a lot to me. I appreciate your comments. So, I'm Scott Vandenberg, general manager at the Hyatt Regency in downtown and also vice chair for Visit Sacramento. So, my comments tonight are simply to express full support for the expansion of the convention center as currently planned. As you know, I've served on the project steering committee over the past two years, and I was pleased to see that so many people, from hoteliers to convention clients, meeting planners, and the arts community, we were all asked to provide our input on this project. We have ended up with a design that allows peak performance. Seeking input from the people who use the facility the most has led us to the final design concept that we have now. This expansion will allow many of our citywide conventions the opportunity to grow, and that is an important factor in getting them to make long-term commitments to our city. As general manager of the city's largest convention hotel, I can say without hesitation that this project will have a tremendous impact on hotel occupancy across our region. I thank you for creating such an inclusive process during the planning stages, and we really look forward to working with all of you to bring new conventions to the city. So, thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Lorraine Brown, and our final speaker is Kathleen Gilley.
Ms. Brown, welcome to you.
Really? Thank you. I'd like to see that in action instead of words. I'm opposed. Very telling statement somebody made. Whether the community, wait, whether the residents of this community will ever step foot inside the community center, it will benefit them. Very telling. Sacramento looks like a war zone, Mayor. The county looks like a war zone, like it's been ravaged. Are you robbing the poor so that you can have out-of-town guests come and enjoy this lovely city that y'all came and y'all said great amenities? Now, let's just rape the people, rob the people. We can't get medical. I can't even renew my license because nobody will help me. All their nonprofits are just window dressing, money laundering. You want to hire criminals, $25 to $18 an hour, when professionals that helped you all get in office, helped you get these programs, budget expansions, are being made destitute. You heard testimony, people that work for the state, people that are professionals in the healthcare, legal, state workers, churches are being made destitute. So, you can enjoy our harvest, our resources? Should we congratulate you on that? When you ran, when all of you ran, did you say you were going to uphold the law of the land, or did you say you were going to go global psycho lunar?
And our final speaker is Kathleen Gilley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Kathleen Gilby. I'm the general manager of the Sheraton Grand here in Sacramento, and as one of the two main convention center hotels, I'd like to express my full support for the expansion of the Sacramento Convention Center. I can tell you firsthand that the economic impact that convention delegates have on our hotels, our restaurants, and our local retailers is significant. Meetings and conventions are the lifeblood of our local tourism industry, and this project will enable the industry to grow, creating jobs, business revenues, and exposure of visitors to our city. Thank you for your support of our industry and for having the clarity to invest in our collective future. We are excited to host more visitors into our community, and we look forward to all the benefits that the new improved facility will have on our region. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That concludes the public testimony. Let's turn it over to the city council for questions, comments, and discussion. I'll begin with the vice mayor and thank him for all his leadership on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. It appears we have a mutual admiration society going tonight because I was going to start by thanking you when you took office. This project looked very different, and a lot of people in the room were at various states of happiness with what we were about to do, and I think where we've ended up with is sort of a triple play. The renovations to the Memorial Auditorium didn't get talked about much tonight, but those are lasting improvements that will really make sure that space has longevity. The Community Center Theater, long-suffering as it is, and those of you who were at our press conference earlier heard my share reference to its history, and I don't know if I'll go back to that joke because I probably can't do it as well.
It was funny earlier.
It was funny earlier, but not funny now, probably. But it is long-suffering and hasn't seen a major renovation since it opened in 1974, but this talk of transformation's been going on for about half of its life. But this talk of transformation has been going on for about half of its life. So I'm glad that we're finally there. I really think tonight, the piece de resistance is the convention center. And the people who are here tonight, from Unite Here, my friend Marion, who I love, who's a longtime employee, this will, I hope, not only generate additional hotel rooms that our local community can work in, but expanded and transformed convention center that Memorial and Theater, that will make sure that we continue to draw in those dollars from outside our region to become the destination that the mayor has talked about. But to really see those folks in our community who need jobs and want good-paying jobs and we've worked very hard to make sure, whether it's Local 39, Unite Here, or I know there are people in the room that don't necessarily think they're going to get a fair shake, but we want our union labor building these projects. And I think that's not a bad thing because those jobs will be local. We have a history, particularly with the arena, and I think that's the program we're trying to replicate, of trying to draw from people who are disadvantaged, from disadvantaged communities to give them opportunity. Those of you who sat through the beginning of this council meeting know that we get encouraged, maybe is a polite word, on every Tuesday night to do more. And I think we've never shied away from the challenge to figure out what we can do to help people using our city resources who are less fortunate and often filling gaps where other people won't. And I think it's a testament to our city council and our city leadership that we're here. But it is truly a remarkable transformation of the convention center, which is a Frankenstein-like creature now and hopefully will be truly transformed because of the work of Populous. The only other thing I want to say, because we've talked about so much of it and the speakers have said it, but this is really the product of terrific staff work. Mr. City Manager, your team, Fran and Desmond, the convention culture staff, Jody and Matt in particular, have done a tremendous, tremendous job. I did talk to the city manager about how Desmond's one-man band kind of act here probably isn't sustainable for the course of these projects and we need to get help in there because these are, this is a big dollar mountain and these are critical. And there's three different separate projects that need the logistical support to ensure that we can deliver. There are significant risks that were outlined. Our current president seems to want to put a lot of pressure on the market for iron in particular and steel. And I think that those risks, along with the ones that the treasurer's office raised, are really important. So that leads me to John Coville, Brian Wong, the whole team over there working on how to finance this to make sure it's responsible. It shouldn't be lost on folks that this is being paid for by the people who visit our hotels, who stay in our hotels. And in addition to that, not only the TOT tax, which is, you know, spread across every room night, but specifically our hotels in the county, hopefully, votes haven't been counted, but agreeing to pay for this additional ballroom. When the convention center is full, we push people out to hotels throughout the region. That compression effect benefits everybody. The convention center doesn't just benefit downtown. It employs people in Meadowview, Oak Park, South SAC, North SAC, everywhere. It'll put them to work, it'll put our community in a good place and it draws people in. So this is just a great success. And I'd also like to thank Samantha Miner from my team who worked a lot on this. So congratulations, everyone, and let's keep going. I'll make a motion to approve the EIR and the staff recommendation. I will open the public hearing, close the public hearing and make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Councilmember Hanson's remarks were very eloquent and there's no question that the construction of the convention center or the renovation of the convention center is a public works project that should benefit as many of our local workers as much as possible. And I think that having that focus in mind is a goal we need to strive for. And I think I brought this up the last time that this item had come up. A couple of things I brought up the last time this item came up. And one was the issue of our current convention and hospitality workers. And I do believe, you know, I think the comments by Ms. Schmidt and Mr. Roth here were something we need to focus on. And I'd like to see that we commit, honor the commitment to our current workers during this timeframe. And I'd like to see that we actually memorialize whatever that commitment is well before we get even done with this project. So, I mean, I know Fran wants to go on her birthday and not be troubled by this and whatnot, so I'd like to see this sooner than later. I think this is an easy piece that we can deal with and manage. And I'd like to make sure that we have that in writing and moving forward early on so that the level of stress that goes with our current workers who are maintaining our facility can feel confident about this project too. They're our constituents as well. So that's one piece, so I'd like to see that. Second, Fran, I think one of the, first of all, Fran, great work. I mean, the city and team, but the amount of time and energy since I came on the council that you put on here, I mean, this is amazing work and the complexity of the problem, project. I mean, you surprised me and it's no wonder you're an alumnus of SAC State's engineering program. So, I had to plug that one in. But I wanted to make sure that we don't get into the same situation where we are today. And some of the concerns that I'd brought up were, is the project design designed in a way where future expansions, if the world of the convention, conventoning occurs, allows us to grow upwards? And, you know, my concern that I've had, at least on the design side, is that the first convention piece that we're going to eliminate was basically designed in a way that was static. And I want to make sure that, you know, whatever we do, whether it's how we position the HVAC system or our major utility lines, they don't impede our ability to later on say, oh, we have to knock down half of this thing to make it actually competitive again. I don't want our city to be in the future to never be competitive and that we can, you know, scale this up as much as possible. So I don't know if you could answer that now? And if not, then I'd like to make sure that when we come back, that be a piece that we explore a little deeper. So I don't know, can you answer that now, Fran? Or if not, we can explore that later.
The one who would most likely be able to answer that would be Michael Lockwood with Populous. You know, beyond the ballroom, I am not sure that we have really had a level of discussion about what that, what future things might be in place, what things there might be in the future. But Michael would be the one to know because we've done, what, fifty iterations?
Sure.
Or something at some point. So he would know if we've actually thought about where we would expand and what we might, what capabilities we might have for expansion.
Okay. So here's what I'd like to, and Michael, if you could come up, I mean, if you have an answer for that, I'd like to hear. Because what, a few months back when we had this conversation, there was a question about always the size of this and then, and how convention centers grow with hotel growth and it's chicken and egg, right? We have to grow our convention center, then our hotel space grow, which then demands more a bigger convention. So I don't know if you could talk to that piece?
Yeah, I would say there's been, since the nineties expansion, there's been a normalization of, I would say, the offerings to the market. So the convention center, the part that's coming down, it's really a challenge to host current events in that space. So there's clear heights and ceilings and rigging capacities, things like that. So the expansion is in line with what was built in the nineties, so that's good. So the space that we have should be good for as long as we can imagine. So it's accommodating for the future. When it comes to the next expansion, today we're basically building out a city block. So you start to look at an expansion opportunity in other parts of the city. There are many cities that have done that, Vancouver, San Francisco with Moscone West. There are many cities that take that next step to expand their center, not contiguous in another city block adjacent to it. So when you start to look at adjacent city blocks, what is that next step in the next maybe fifteen or twenty years? So we always want to be mindful of that. So I think the building that we are designing and constructing as part of this project should sustain for decades. And then the next big step would be probably an off-site expansion unless you wanted to start to close streets or do things like that or go vertically. So you can always go vertical above.
So, and I think that's my point. I'd like to make sure that when we come back here, that there's a conversation about if the expansion was ever to go vertically, that there's some thought process now to not prevent that. I mean, looking around at what's around the area, we're obviously not going to expand sideways unless we want to take out a historic church. We just heard that concern now. So I'd like to make sure that we, that we have that design aspect in mind. So I think when we come back again, I'd like to make sure that we do that. The only reason I say it is because when the Golden One Center was completed and we were doing the tours up top, everybody said, well, this is an amazing place. Why can't we just build a, you know, another rooftop amenity? Well, they didn't think of that. And why? And so the design aspect of that, of where they put the electrical, the HVAC system, impeded that ever from happening. So I want to make sure we're thinking, forward-thinking, if we're going to take this major investment, that we think even further than two decades.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Two decades is when I got my engineering degree, so I think we want to think further. With that, Mr. Mayor, I just, I'll go ahead and second the motion, but two things, one on the engineering side, let's make sure we do that. On the second, I want to make sure there's a commitment to our workers well before we get down this piece and I'd like to make sure that it's memorialized in writing. Glad to second the motion.
Okay. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, I support the project, but a question. Fran, when you came and briefed me on this, I told you I wasn't going to be an architect, but I got two questions on design. One, is there an entry into the convention center from J Street? Didn't show up well. And do we have vehicle barriers around this facility?
So, yes, there, we will maintain the north entry on J Street that we have currently and that will, that will be improved on the interior. So we'll actually have three lobbies. We'll have a lobby on the east, a lobby on the west and a lobby on the north. And again, that builds in all kinds of flexibility for different configurations. With regard to kind of safety and having bollards, we will actually have bollards to protect the plaza area so that, you know, you don't have people accidentally driving on or purposely driving onto that area.
On L Street and 15th as well?
On, on L and 15th, that's at the theater site. I don't believe that we have bollards in that, in that area. Michael, I don't think that's. Yeah, we don't have bollards in that area. That's a loading dock area, so what they'd be crashing into would be the loading dock if they were to lose control of their vehicle or, you know, again, purposely go into there. So that's not where the performers are and that's not where the patrons would be. So in terms of a risk, there's relatively low risk in that area compared to other access.
Both set on both L and 15?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Both L and 15th have loading docks.
So at the corner of L and, actually, it's L and 14th. L and 15th is where the, is where a private office building is and where the restaurants are. L and 14th is where the loading dock is, yes.
And then on 15th Street, there are no bollards as well?
On 15th, in front of the east lobby, we don't have any bollards at that location either. The bollards are placed in the, in the public plaza to, because that's the easiest area where somebody could drive, drive onto. Whereas the intersection of 15th and K is quite a busy intersection. You've got trees, you've got other street furniture in that area. So we didn't see the need for bollards at that location.
You know a guy drove up the steps at the Capitol, right? In the big truck?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilman Chenier.
Couple of questions. So one is, I just want to put a little point on what Mr. Garrett said around employment for the folks who've been working there. And Fran, can we get, do you think we can get that agreement done by your birthday as well? I just don't want to leave it open.
No, let me actually add this. I'm glad I got the opportunity to do that. As we completed the private operations and made the determination that we, that the council made the determination, we're not going there, our next step is that we are working with our consultants on a management plan. Because as we've talked before, we need to manage this facility more as, in a different way, improve the business side of things and our operations. So based on the management plan, we may end up with a different staffing situation of exactly how we staff and what positions we have. So we are working, convention culture, convention cultural services and I, we are working on that plan. And then we will be matching during the transition, we clearly are going to have a lot less people because only the memorial is open, so we're working on where we would place people throughout the city and how all that works and then where they end up getting placed back because we might have different positions. So this, this is an ongoing process. We have to go through the labor, the labor relations process in doing that with the unions. So it's, it's more than just an agreement, it's a, it's a multi-step process that we have already started. They will be involved once we have the management plan in place. And your question about the center plate, which is what you, people call classic center plate, their contract expires, I believe, in 2020.
Right. So I'm not as concerned with the actual contractor. I'm concerned with the folks.
Absolutely.
Whether it goes to a new contractor or not. I mean, that's a contract that we would have to sign. Can you give me an idea on the timing? So what you just talked about sounds very reasonable.
Right. We've got three labor unions.
Right.
We've actually already started that process with all of them. And so as we develop what that management plan looks like, we share that with them. Then we start talking about where we would be able to place people and all those kind of discussions and.
So clearly it's a priority for a number, if not all of us at the DAIS. What do you, when do you think you can come back and say, this is how this is going to work?
If it's okay, I'd like to respond back to you after I have a chance to kind of, I don't, I'm not sure exactly when we're going to have that management plan. We have a draft of it.
That's fine.
So it's a few months because this whole labor relations process takes a while because there's all this meet and confer that happens. So it's going to be, you know, a few months, but I would guess by the end of the year.
Okay. I mean, I think that's fine if you do it as long as people know because
Yes.
There are a lot of folks who are working who will kind of be in limbo and we want to make sure they have some security about knowing where they're going to be. And I think for myself certainly and others on the council, we want to know that those folks are taken care of. They put a lot of effort into it.
And we did have a meeting. Actually, Howard came also. We did two meetings with the staff.
That's been great if Howard came.
Whoever could come to, you know, to hear that it is our intention to place people during the transition and it's our intention to place people afterwards. Because, you know, what we're hearing is our service is, you know, that we provide, our city staff provides incredible service, which is why our customers want to come back and are, we're getting very high ratings and stuff. So clearly our staff are doing a great job and we want to make sure that they have that opportunity to do that when we have this, this great new facility.
Okay. Couple of other things then. So clearly, and a number of the speakers, including Mr. Alt and Mr. Sellen and others said this, this is really about economic development for the city and the creation of new jobs and the creation of more economic activity, both directly within the convention center and then the ancillary impacts that we're going to have on restaurants and hotels and all that. And hopefully being able to see growth in the TOT over time because of this. So I'm excited about all of that. On the jobs piece directly, there's two places this will happen. One is around construction and the other will be around the delta between the convention center today and the theater today and the new convention center and new theater and how many new jobs will be generated by this work. Do you have numbers on those things or estimates?
Desmond may be able to expand on it, but in the staff report, we did a, we provided information on basically what they call the INPLAN model, what it estimates. And so there was numbers on what the uptick would be in terms of new TOT revenue. And then there's some level of information more about spending, but.
What do you got?
Yeah, so overall, when we use the INPLAN model, it's about twenty-eight hundred new jobs would be created, both temporary and permanent. And then of that, we also asked for Kitchell, which is doing the theater project, and AECOM Hunt, which will be doing the convention center project to provide us their staffing plans. And so they, you know, they've got significant staffing over the life of the project. So for example, peak hiring on. So it, for example, peak hiring on the convention center for one month would be 400. And so obviously, that tapers up and then tapers down as the project goes. And then similarly, on the community center theater, peak hiring would be roughly about 200 of construction workers per month. And again, that tapers up and then tapers down. So, you know, again, some of those folks may be the same people that work month to month, but, but new people will be coming in all the time as new trades are working on, you know, the different aspects of the project.
So here's a request, and I don't know if it would be direction or if the maker of the motion would take this as a friendly amendment. When we talked about Golden One, we had the folks who built Golden One come to report on us on all of the metrics that we talked about. I know we'll have something similar here. And we've requested an economic analysis of the impact of Golden One, which is still rumbling around somewhere, which has been quite a while since we got there. It's always easier, if we want to do an evaluation of the economic impact of this, it's going to be much easier for us to design it today and follow it as we go, rather than come back after the fact and say, "We want to see what we did and what, what the impact was at." So I would love for us, and I don't know if it's internal, or we contract for it, or we talk to Jorge and, and go with our auditor on this, or our independent budget analysis, however we do that, my request would be that we, as we're beginning on this project, we design the analysis and then follow it through and use that to update both the council and the community about the impact that we're having along the way. So there will be some impacts from the direct employment, obviously, in building, and then long-term impacts, both in hiring individuals to work there and in the ancillary impacts, economic impacts of the, of the, the project itself, or both projects, if we're all three, I guess, if we include Memorial. But I'd love to see us really take that seriously and do it today because we will have, we have critics today, we'll have critics tomorrow. This is as large, or I guess a larger expenditure than certainly have, I've voted on in my term on the council, bigger than Golden One for the city part of this. It's bigger than the water treatment plan and some of the other bonds as well. So I want to make sure that we do this correctly so that we have the ability to answer those who say, "You're putting money in the wrong place." Because this is an investment for the city, and I hope that we can do other projects of this scale, whether it's the riverfront or other things like that. But I think we need to track this and make sure we know. I know there were a lot of lessons learned from Golden One, particularly in the agreements we had around local hire and the agreements we had around apprenticeships and all of that. We'll use that. I want to also be able to use these projects as a springboard to the future of what we do as well. So I don't know if, if you would take that as part of your motion.
Yeah, I, I'd happily do that. During the process that the mayor convened, we actually brought in the Barea Council Institute, and we looked at a bunch of the different economic models. GSAC was part of that, and I think we came up with a ton of economic data. So I think we have a base of inquiry to build on and to shape around, so I don't think that would be hard.
That'd be great.
And I think it's a really good point, so.
I just wanted to do it at the outset.
If any of my second concurs, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Concur.
Yeah, I just want to do it at the outset, rather than at the end of the day, coming back and saying, "Now we'll figure out how to evaluate what we did." Thank you.
You. Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to be succinct because it's getting late, and we still have two more items, and it's hard, it's such an important issue, but it's also nine o'clock at night, right? So get everybody home. For me, and I don't want to belabor the points that have already been made, they're all good points, but a couple of things. First of all, the first time that this project came forward to us, we were given, and it wasn't even the same full councils, but, but we were given three sort of scenarios, and they each had a different price tag. And I feel like we, at the time, said, "Well, we can only afford this one." But we have inched our way, all the way to the biggest one that we, you know, that was on the, the list there. So tonight, for tonight's presentation, I am supportive, and of the project, I am supportive. But some of the details are coming forward in the next few months, and I think there will be many more questions. And I think you're hearing my colleagues sort of flirting around the edges of some of those questions. So I too would like to put some cards on the table in terms of questions I'll have in the coming months. First of all, I never thought this project was worth it without the ballroom. I, I never thought that. So thank you to the hotel group for finding a way to get that done. I, I, I just never understood why we would do the whole thing without that. So for me, on the idea of a project labor agreement, it's complicated because since we did the arena and created a bit of a precedent, we also created a pool of local hires that need prevailing wage jobs to move to from the arena. And we can't let that group drop. So there's this group of young people that we ask to be hired that are from specific ZIP codes that are now waiting for another Public Works job to work on. That needs to be addressed in this, and I think that's a lot what you're hearing around this project labor agreement that's different from, from previous times. That being said, when that issue comes back, Mayor, and is more detailed, I do, I mean, there, you know, there are compelling things. Like, we say we want a local hire, but then 30% is a low number, so we should talk about what that means and how small businesses play in. I don't think there's any doubt from the group up here that we want people building these Public Works projects to be paid prevailing wages. We, as Councilmember Vice Mayor Hanson said, you need only sit through one of these meetings to see the pressure that we're under, to make sure that we're addressing things like income and equity and, and communities that need to be paid fairly. So I don't think there's going to be any argument from this dais about prevailing wage, about really strong jobs, about the wages that are paid. But the way that things are worded needs to include our small and minority and women-owned businesses too, so that they can plug in. And I know we've done that in the past. I know it can be done successfully. They're a big part of our community, and we want to make sure that we truly are meeting as many of those needs as we can. I'm concerned about the cost overruns. So, you know, I, I'm not so concerned that I want to stop it, but it's a lot of money, as Jay said. In our eight years here, aside from maybe the arena and the water treatment facilities, this is the biggest financial... Yeah, it's, I mean, it's huge for us. I mean, each time, they've had their own, this one's TOT, you know, one was water-specific, and, and then the other one's parking. But it's a big, big, big project, and we need to make sure we're getting it right and that the cost overruns don't keep coming on us, that there's some type of way to, to rein that in. I in particular am interested in the TOT projections and allocations and what's included and what's not included. I know that's a discussion in September, we'll take that vote. But I'll be looking closely at what's included and what's not included, and really, to the mayor's point, what remains. He said, every time I've heard him speak, he said, "We can't be like one thing every 20 years." So we have to make sure this leaves room to do the other things too that he wants to do. So we need to achieve that goal. And I don't know how that all works out with this. Everything can't come from TOT. TOT's been the, the money horse for every single thing we've done forever. It can't be that anymore. But we do need to figure out, and I can't think of a project as appropriate as this for TOT, but it's still important that we don't encumber ourselves in every financial category for decades to come. So I'll be interested in, in how that goes. My two cents on the workers, I've been really clear about this in the past as well, but I was surprised to see them here tonight. If there's some part of this deal that edges them out, then I'm out. That doesn't make any sense. They should have their jobs when they come back. It's bad enough that they're displaced during a portion of this. I can't imagine any member of this council that feels differently than that. These guys have stuck with us through some pretty difficult things over the last eight years that I've been here. I've said this before, and I will say it again, those are our people. The rest is a building. So we need to make sure that we take care of them. And the, the church issue is a big deal. That's a beautiful church. It's a wonderful, I'm sure Councilmember Hanson loves it because it is a gorgeous centerpiece in the middle of, of his district there. So whatever needs to be done, Fran, hopefully you're already working with the church, but I know the stained glass windows, and I know on 700 block, when they started doing demolition, they were surprised at some of the things that, some of the impacts on the neighboring buildings. So whatever we need to do to make sure that we're taking care of that really unique, beautiful historic building, are, are we coordinating with them?
So Desmond had actually already started talking with her.
Okay, great.
Our contractor, Hunt, is here.
Okay.
The good thing is that they're on the east side, which is not the side we're demolishing.
Right.
So there's the whole east side that's going to kind of protect them with distance. And the kind of work we're doing on the east side is not the kind of work where you have to be as concerned.
Great. Well, I trust you with the details. I don't need to hear every detail of that, but I just want to make sure you understand it's super important. That's a, that's a great building, and, you know, we wouldn't be able to fix it. And then obviously, it's a church, so their Sunday morning issue about sound is relevant, and I hope somebody will work through that with them. We wouldn't want them to not be able to hold their church services on Sunday morning. So, and those are the issues for me, most of them. I'll be interested in as they come back to this council in more detail. Thank you, everyone, on the city staff, Councilmember Hanson's team, mayor's team, the legal team. I know the treasurer's office has been breathing this forever. I don't think Desmond has seen his wife or children in months. So to everyone who's worked on this, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you've heard most of the testimony, and there are a couple of things that I'd like to add. First, I'd like to thank the Community Development Department and specifically Bruce Monaghan. You know, I know, Bruce, that you've worked pretty hard on this, and I appreciate your design input. Mr. Lockwood, could I ask you a question, please? So, yeah, I noticed on the exterior design, a very liberal use of scrim. And that concerns me a little bit. You know, it's very effective where there's glass behind it because of the light effect. But like on the J Street side, I'm concerned about it. Aesthetically, it is not a choice that I favor, but it can be enhanced very much with lighting. So do you have a lighting scheme to sort of set it off?
We do. We, we're studying that currently, but we've started to look at how the lighting, we can uplight it, we can color change the lighting to brand the facility. So we do like it on the north side because it, it's screening a lot of our mechanical equipment on the north side of the building. So it's up high, it's above the pedestrian level.
Right.
So we've treated J Street with planters, some benches, trees. We've widened the sidewalk there at the pedestrian level. And then above that datum, the screening blocks the mechanical stuff. So we've looked at lighting opportunities to uplight it or downlight it. That's still in the design process. But yeah, we think it's a, it's a good way to brand that side of the facility when you're on J Street, which is a busy street, which will activate it with lights and color.
Well, again, you know, it seemed to me like a rather liberal use and, you know, to break it up with, you know, other features like the artwork that you mentioned, it's going to be very important. And then, of course, the use of light can be pretty special, as we found out, because we have some pretty great local light artists. That was my question for you. Thanks very much. You know, like Councilmember Ashby, I, I thought we had reined in our appetites, and now they've expanded again. But these are pretty special projects, and the way we chopped it earlier made it a less functional space, and I, I think everybody's in agreement on that. So the important thing is that, and I've brought this up several times, that there's a stress test because we are going to go into a downturn in the not distant future. We've had more months of economic expansion than this country has ever experienced before, period. This is historic at this point. There will be a downturn, and so it's very important that we can demonstrate adequately that we can withstand those pressures of the general economy and still pay the debt service on this project. They're great projects. They'll be great for Sacramento, but only if we can afford them. And so when we have that economic discussion, I think like Councilmember Ashby, I'll be looking at that pretty closely. Councilmember Chenier brought up a very salient point. If we had our economic, economic analysis of the Golden One Center in hand right now, it would be much easier to sell this project to the public, to allay the concerns about acquiring more debt service, to be able to indicate, you know, where we're going with this and the return on investment. I remember very clearly, when we were looking at the Golden One Center, then Mayor Johnson brought in, you know, some analyses, some projections of, of what the G1C could do for us, and people didn't believe them. They, they didn't believe that there would be that kind of economic benefit from that building and that it was just going to jack up the cost of parking, and, you know, people were very fearful of the outcome. It turns out, the outcome has been pretty solid, but we still haven't demonstrated that to the public, Fran. And if we were able to do that, I think we could really allay a lot of concern. So Jay's point about further, you know, projects further down the line, if we can just show you, "Look, we built this, and this was the economic benefit to, to the broader community," that's very powerful. So I agree with him 100%, and thank you for making that addition to the, the motion because I think we can tell our story better. You know, these are very significant public investments, and there's risk involved with every investment that you ever make. You know, the higher the risk, the greater the return, and this one has some risks to it. So if we had those metrics, it would be, it would be tremendous. You know, as far as employment and, you know, how we, how we build this thing, there's a lot of work here. There's work for unions, there's work for non-union workers as well. Right now, our workforce is so tapped out that neither one of them can handle it on their own, to tell you the truth. We have to put all of our local workers, you know, on this job. So it'll be interesting to see how those workforce agreements develop. But that's a great thing. That's a great thing that we have so much work in this area that we're actually hurting for qualified people to build. It means that we can train more people, and it means that there's some assurance, you know, for employment moving forward. So I'm excited about the project, and I'll be supporting it.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited about the project too, and I think we've been here a while, so I'm going to be very brief. I'm going to give you my top 10 reasons that I'm going to support the project. All right, so first of all, I think the process has been very fair and inclusive, and so that's number one for me. Number two, I'm excited about the improved synergy between the theater and the convention center. And in saying that, I'm especially pleased with the total transformation of the theater. And if I want to be specific, I want to talk about the bathrooms and the seating. So not only am I pleased, but my wife is pleased, and my mother-in-law is pleased, and I can name about 10,000 other women who will be pleased. And the fact that they have twice as many bathrooms as we have. All right, good. So then, I'm, I'm very pleased about the potential 2,800 new temporary and permanent jobs. I'm pleased with the ability to track more meetings and conventions than Sacramento's ever had before. I'm excited to see local businesses here in support. They're talking about the, how it will improve their business as well as the economic value for Sacramento. I'm pleased to talk about local hire and apprenticeships, and we have a model that worked with Golden One. And I think, you know, if that model worked, why would we change it? And so I'm pleased at that. I'm pleased that we have a team that, that is a part of Sacramento that has brought this in front of us. And so I want to thank all the team, including Council, Councilmember Hanson and the mayor and everybody else that was a part of making this thing happen. And I'm also pleased in a potential $2.7 million in TOT revenue that could come as a result of this project. So I think that's my top 10, and I'm, I'm pleased to support this project.
You so much. Councilmember, last comment, if I may. I ran for this office as mayor primarily because I think it is important that we pay attention and invest in our neighborhoods and in an inclusive economy. And I'm unapologetic. In fact, I'm gleeful about tonight's opportunity. Because the moment, as a city, that we devolve into an either-or, we are not coming close to reaching our potential. We need destination amenities. We need economic drivers. We need more tourism. We need more capital. We need more wealth. We need more wealth. And then, as policymakers, we need to make sure that the benefits of that capital and wealth are invested and directed into our neighborhoods. This is a good and great thing, and in fact, we need more of it. When I started, you know, I looked at this, and I had some concerns. Basically, my concern, I'm not a design guy. I look at the pretty pictures, and it looks good to me, and it actually looks very nice to me. But I looked at this, and I said, what bothered me about it initially was that all of the TOT capacity, all the money, was going into three assets in the community. And recognize, and this is one of those nuanced things that I, I think it's important for us to educate the public about, that we can't use the hotel tax for a lot of neighborhood investment. We cannot, legally, we cannot. You can only use it for investments that will create more hotel demand in hotel spaces. That's the law. That's actually the California Constitution. So this is a unique tool. But what I didn't like back in December was that we were using a ballpark capacity for three assets, and the design wasn't as certainly as refined or as good it is now. So we stepped back, and we spent a year and an intensive process, and Councilmember Hanson, Vice Mayor Hanson was involved, sitting next to me, with a lot of stakeholders. And where we end up with here is a design, first of all, that everyone's proud of, as I said earlier, an additional infusion from the hotel industry of, is it 40 or 50?
Both.
It's both. Forty to 50 million dollars. And now we're able to have the grand project, but this is what I want to leave you with, because in several weeks, I've talked to the city manager, Howard, and I would like to bring back an item that actually establishes this long-talked-about Destination Sacramento Fund. Want to actually establish it in ordinance, because this is what the numbers tell us. And I would refer you to page 10 of the staff report. There is a low range and a high range here in terms of the cost estimates that range from $319.5 million for the project to $338 million. The amount of sources or revenue that we have for the projects is $357 million. So that means, just going to do some quick math, that there is additional capacity of between $18 and $37 million. Not done yet. That doesn't include naming rights. It doesn't include vendor contract contributions. It doesn't include the so-called MOPA funds, which is a complicated subject, but it's, is a source of revenue that we may be able to use. The low estimate of that source of fund is between, is 6 million. The high end is almost 50. So when you add those two together, and you can, we will have between 25 and almost $100 million worth of additional TOT capacity. Now, some of that may be used for the inevitable cost pressure issues that we've talked about. But there should be significant capacity left over to invest in the riverfront, and to be able to take on more projects more quickly to increase our tax base, so we can invest more in the neighborhoods. And of course, that doesn't include the Measure U proposal that we talked about at Budget Audit Committee that would seek to create capital to invest directly into neighborhoods. So this is exciting. And the more we do, the more jobs we create, the more vitality we create for our community, and the more real opportunity we create to invest in young people in our neighborhoods. And with local hire, and a real commitment to it, and even improvement from what we did with the Golden One Center, even more young people get to work on these projects. So let's, let's go all in, and let's vote yes.
Aye.
Please, please call the roll, or please, why don't we call the roll?
Yeah, call the roll.
Call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Thinking.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilman Guerra.
Yes.
Councilman Shinier.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Very good. Eight to nothing. Congratulations, everybody. Way to go.
Mr. Mayor, now that we've done the formal business on the convention center, I only have one thing to ask to our convention center people. Can we get some baby-changing tables in the men's bathroom? I had a tough experience.
I would think that would be, I would, I would think that would be the first order of business. Thank you all very much.
Law now?
What?
Is that state law now?
I think it may be state law, yes.
State law.
Good job, everybody. Okay. Okay, we got two items, but I'm told they're going to take a very short amount of time. And let us go with item 33. Go, go.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. I'm Remy Mendoza with the Community Development Department. Tonight, I'm presenting the city's general plan annual report for the 2017 calendar year. The annual report is used to identify trends and to gauge the successes and barriers in implementing the general plan. For this report, we, we have reached out to all of the city departments.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's have everyone, I know, clear out, if you wait just a second, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Remy.
That's all right. Sorry about that. It's late. This, by the way, just because it's late hour doesn't mean this is, item isn't important. Just, you know.
For the third time.
Is what it is. Go, go.
So for this report, we've reached out to all of the city's departments and included in this report our combined success stories. Additionally, there are three main sources of information used for the report. The livability index, which tracks 14 indicators of a livable city. Each indicator has a set of data points that identify economic development and cultural trends. We also track development activity to monitor the residential and non-residential development activity. And lastly, we are also reporting on the general plan implementation measures, which tracks the progress that city departments have made in implementing the general plan. The annual report is guided by six themes shown here on this slide. Community outreach identified these themes as important in reaching the overall vision of the general plan. The first theme is growing smarter. The general plan envisions that most new development in the city will occur in our infill areas identified as opportunity areas. There are over 70 key opportunity areas in the city, largely located in centers, corridors, and districts.
Mayor, sorry, can I chime in right here, please?
Yes, you may.
And I'll be brief. I think, hopefully, you know this is coming, always trying to surprise you. But Mayor, there's a piece missing on here, and I brought copies for my colleagues. I'll just, I didn't have time to put these on your seats beforehand, sorry, you guys, but here you go. Can I give you this?
Yes.
Jeff, will you leave me one? This section should be read and tiered one also. We discussed it during the, God, I don't even know what we're supposed to call that project now. It was Centene, I think it's now Quadrant B, or Heinz, or something else, but whatever. Anyway, during that discussion, we approved this section that I just handed to all of you as a Natomas economic zone. It needs to be designated as a Tier One shovel-ready project for the items that are looking to come into that region. And so my, I want whoever the maker of the motion is later, when you're done in two minutes, to include this as a Tier One project, shovel-ready project as well on the map that you just showed. Yeah?
Can I say something about that?
Sure.
The shovel-ready sites map that was shown on the screen earlier is outdated map. It is from 2009. However, and it was adopted by council resolution as part of a general plan update. We are going to be initiating a new update of the general plan this summer, and as part of that update, we're proposing to revisit the shovel-ready sites map and update it in its entirety.
Sure. Understood. This just needs to be included right now. Because of other projects and commitments this council has made in the last few months, this needs to be included as soon as possible. That's all. Thank you. Mayor, good?
Good. Thank you so much. All right. Are we, are we done? Almost?
Almost. Just a couple more minutes. So as part of the annual report, we track the development that occurs in these shovel-ready sites, which are shown in the red and blue map. And over the last eight years, 52% of new residential units and 61% of commercial development has occurred in these shovel-ready areas. Here are several of the featured infill projects, including Phase 3 of the Ice Blocks on R Street, the Stockton and T Street mixed-use project. Additional infill projects include the 65th Street Apartments, the Third and S Street mixed-use building, as well as the Spanos Apartments. Supporting the vibrant economy is another general plan theme. The annual report goes into detail about the city's healthy economic performance, household income, as well as new private development activity. The city also continues to be a leader in sustainability. Last year, the city council approved an electric vehicle strategy. Additionally, the Green City Initiative was announced, where the city, in partnership with Volkswagen, will expand zero-emission vehicle access in the community. Last year, the city also entered into the solar power partnership with SMUR for 13 megawatts of solar PV operation off-site on behalf of the city, resulting in savings equivalent of seven months of free electricity for city facilities. In 2017, the city also received the Institute of Local Government's Beacon Award for reduction in community greenhouse gas emissions, as well as implementation of numerous other best practices. Creating a healthy environment is also another theme of this report. In this section, we have included some accomplishments from police, fire, and parks for the 2017 calendar year. For example, last year, we had a groundbreaking event for a new fire station, 15 in South Natomas. The fire department also responded to a record number of calls for service, including multiple calls for wildland fires. And we've continued the rehabilitation of parks and to have park programming for youth, teens, and seniors. And then also, on the theme of making great places, the B Street Theater's new Sofia Sacapola Center for the Arts recently celebrated its grand opening in Midtown, $30 million, $48,000 square foot complex, and boasts three performance stages and a new restaurant just outside the theater. So in summary, development continues to gain stride, but at a new normal. Livability in Sacramento does continue to improve, although there are challenges with respect to incomes that have stagnated, the issue of homelessness, housing affordability for both homeownership and the rental market. On the positive trend, unemployment rate has fallen to record-low territory. The city's annual revenue is increasing, and while violent crime is down, household consumption and water consumption is also lower, and air quality is improving, as well as the number of volunteer hours with city departments is trending upward. As part of this staff report, I would like to mention the staff is also recommending that council pass a resolution to transfer funds from the community plan, Community Plan Program Fund to the General Plan Update Fund for community plan work to be undertaken as part of the upcoming general plan update. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have, we, Ms., moved in second, we don't have, we do have councilmembers, we have Ms. Brown, who signed up on two straight items. Really? Can you wait till the next item and speak on, speak on that?
I'll do that.
Well, we're going to vote on them separately, but, you know, you want, we, no, that's okay. Why don't we call you on the next item, okay? If that's okay. All right. Let's hear from Jeff Harris.
Remy, I'd just like to thank you on good work. You know, the, the amount of information that's compiled in this report is kind of fascinating. I think it gives a real pulse on where the city is now. I appreciate seeing all these metrics, and to my colleague Larry Carr, I would say that there's the basis of a lot of policy, if you really comb through this general plan. You know, with all due respect to Councilmember Ashby, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable making changes like this at the dais. It, it, it just sort of pushes the limit for me. So I would prefer to just move the, the staff resolution, although you've already made a motion. And I guess somebody has seconded?
So what, what would be the way to accommodate Councilmember Ashby's very important request here, but do it in a way that doesn't, if it's possible, that doesn't make the change from the dais? Is there a way we can do this procedurally in a, in a clean and nimble way here?
Mayor, Tom Pace, Planning Director, I might suggest that we take tonight's action as direction for the general plan update process, where we can effectuate it officially through a resolution as we update all those diagrams.
Would that be okay with you, councilmember? Okay, so then, the motion includes direction, but the, the, it's not an official amendment, if you will, all right?
I think, Mayor, that's what Remy said when I brought the map up, was that they, they'll, they would have included that anyway. They know to include that. They're, they made that map that I just handed out to you. But it just wasn't included yet, and I think what I heard Remy say was that they were planning on getting to that soon. I'm just asking that they do it sooner, because it's important for some items. And I think that's what Tom's saying, is they'll, they'll do it as quickly as they can.
Is that okay, Jeff, then? Does that, okay, that's fine. That clarifies that.
That's not, that's not a problem.
Actually, what, what the item is, is to transfer funds so that you can carry on with the plan update.
Okay.
Correct. Exactly. So if you've seconded, that's fine.
I'm, I'm, I'm just clarified that it is the original motion without the amendment, but it's just direction. Correct. It's all good.
Are you seconding it?
Okay, great. Did I second it?
Well, if you didn't, I just did.
Well, I'm, and I'm, don't get in the way of my seconding it, okay?
I'm not stepping on you, Greg. Okay, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, good. Very good. Councilman Gueda.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Remy, Greg, thank you very much for all the work here. I do want to take this opportunity to, to ask that when we're looking at the update, what we can do about the conversation of creating transit-oriented development corridors, and this is in respect to areas like Stockton Boulevard. I think we talked about both Ryan and Tom, both, I think, we've, we've talked about the need to look at how we can reform those corridors. And, and in some of the cases, you know, we have zoning areas that are meant to create maximum limits, and I guess what I'm concerned now is, if we really want to push development in some of these areas, almost looking at minimum limits of, of development, so that we can avoid this low-hanging fruit with some properties that actually don't help us transform these corridors. So I'd like to make sure that we come back with a discussion on figuring out what are the new models that we can use to impact those corridors, particularly, obviously, Stockton Boulevard, but some of Franklin and Del Paso Heights have the similar issues.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilmember Ashby, did we address your issue?
Yeah, I think, Mayor, that it's addressed. I just wanted to, when Jeff was talking, I just want to make sure he understood I didn't, I meant for it to just be an expedited item from here, not to actually change this report, but as they move forward with this. And then also, the information, I agree with Councilmember Harris, this is such an important document, and it has so many pieces in it that can inform other things that we're doing, including like Measure U, or other conversations we're having around budget and audit. And as Councilmember Garrus pointed out, for example, on page 18, where it breaks down healthy environments, which is some of the things he's talking about, air quality, it also breaks out response times for crimes and emergency response. And I, I think we should just play, pay a keen eye on that, because when we're looking at policies and we want to know what the response times need to be in each community, this helps you set a baseline. And, and if you look at it, our numbers are going in the wrong direction over the last few years, and it's, it's really great, as Councilmember Harris said, when you look at it, break it out amongst communities, it changes even more. So I just would encourage people to use this document, and, and this next step that they're going to do, where they break it out more for us, will be important to inform all the other things that we're doing, so.
Good. It's, make sure it doesn't sit on a dusty shelf. Thank you. Okay. It's been moved and seconded, as clarified, with direction. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Very good. We have one more item tonight, and that is our city auditor, Mr. Seguera. If you could make this brief, please, sir, we'd appreciate it. Thank you for your patience.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. Jorge Seguera, city auditor. The recommendation that is before you is that you pass a motion approving the whistleblower hotline activity report. This report covers the six-month period of October 2017 through March of 2018. As shown on the chart, case volumes have been consistent over the last four years. As of March 31st, the office has received 865 allegations, 78 of which were received during this reporting period. During the same period, our office has closed 84 cases. During this period, we substantiated 15 cases. For example, we substantiated a couple of cases involving commuting outside of the city radius for overnight vehicles, and found that ending the improper commuting activities in the two incident- in the two instances could reduce vehicle use and associated wear and tear. We also substantiated a few cases involving violations of the city's nepotism and conflict of interest policy. Lastly, we wanted to note a couple of cases we substantiated that involved sexual harassment. We understand that the mayor and city manager have been making strong efforts to encourage employees to speak up and say something if they see or experience harassment. In the cases we substantiated, the whistleblowers alleged inappropriate content was distributed by city employees. Whistleblowers were able to anonymously report their concerns of a sensitive topic through the whistleblower hotline.
Switch this up really quick. How many complaints on the whistleblower hotline since the city manager and I sent out our letter of a year or so ago? Was it a year? Nine months ago?
We get about 15 a month, so if it was a year, we'd get about 160 between then and now.
Sexual harassment?
Oh, not just about sexual harassment.
I'm talking about sexual harassment complaints.
I wouldn't have that number right now. I could get back to you on that.
Estimate?
Estimate. I'd say eight.
A month?
No, in that year period.
Eight in that, in that period of time. Okay.
Yep. We have also updated our whistleblower marketing material and created this poster that will be distributed soon. We look forward to working with the mayor and city manager to encourage employees to speak up when they see an employee wrongdoing. The full report provides a summary of all the cases that we substantiated during the reporting period. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you so much for the important work. And a hotline, I mean, just every modality we have to get out the word to employees that they can safely report any wrongdoing or any discomfort, bless you, is important. All right, let's hear from Ms. Brown here, as our one person left to testify. Take your time, ma'am. It's okay.
Well, in light of what's going on in our community, I think there's some dishonesty here. I mean, we're painting a nice picture, and I'm glad you're engineers and builders.
But what's your comment on the whistleblower report, Ms. Brown?
The whistleblower, even the whistleblower thing is almost a joke. It's almost like Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood. Do you report what your contractors or the ex-convicts, that the people that are investing in, because they get a tax shelter by hiring convicts and hiring people that are at risk? Do you have a whistleblower for the misconduct of those people that are getting $18 to $25 an hour while the citizens are being denied services? Or when you have, let me think how I can put this, UN assets coming in to invest, and they're threatening doctors? Do you know that they're threatening doctors, the administrators, and not following doctors' orders? And telling the doctors, if they don't listen to some unqualified person to deny services or do the wrong service, that the doctors will lose their hospital privilege, privileges? Do we have a hotline for that kind of stuff? Because to me, this is monumental.
The city of Sacramento.
Okay, no, wait, wait. No, let me finish this. No. You attracted seniors, and you attracted foreigners to invest in real estate, and they decided to use the prison population and the welfare population and get our HUD to pay for the housing and encourage them to violate their probation and parole. So this way, they could ask HUD for more money for housing them, and then their absentee landlords are not taking care of the facility or providing proper management. Do we have a whistleblower call, call-in for that, when people are being put at risk? Because you're looking for tax shelters for foreign investors that want to invest in municipal bonds?
Your time is up, ma'am.
Yeah, I bet.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Well, and when is your time gonna be up?
Thank you so much. Yeah. The item has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Okay, that passes, and that completes our agenda. We do have council ideas and questions?
I have an appointment.
An appointment. I want to begin here, myself. If I may, I'll turn it over to the members. I'd like to have a discussion among my colleagues and with the city manager about agenda setting for these meetings. And here's what I specifically mean by that. And the city attorney. I would like to put out an idea, and we can think about it, but I want to say it publicly, that this council, at least once or twice a month, meet in workshop session at 5:00 PM. The, this is a public venue for people to be heard, absolutely. But I sometimes feel like the very important deliberations and discussions between colleagues here get short shrifted, because this is the easy venue for people who want to organize, and they have every right to, by the way, to come on in here and frankly dominate the meetings. And I want them to always have a voice, and they will have a voice. But I would like some opportunity for this body to be able to work with each other in public and open session in a way where we can discuss the vital issues affecting our city. Because I don't think we do enough of that, frankly. And I don't think it does a service to the city when we are left, you know, between a very limited hours on a Tuesday to be able to, to be able to discuss the future of our city. So one way we can do that is to meet in workshop setting once or twice a month at 5:00. And I'd like us to think about that. I'd like to consider it. I want to make this a serious discussion, because doing this every single week in the way that we're doing this, I don't think is the most productive use of my leadership, frankly, as your mayor, who came back from 14 years in the legislature and president of the senate to... And I'm a good listener, as you all are, and have an open heart to everybody, but this is, these folks can, you know, organize here, that's fine. I also want to make sure that we're conducting the public's business in a way that gives us a chance to deliberate and talk. So I'd like us to consider one or two workshops a month at 5:00, where we are having a more robust discussion about specific agenda items and the future of our city. That's my idea and question for the Tuesday night. Yes? As the council agenda, one or two, on Tuesdays. There'd be plenty of opportunity for members of the public and BLM and everybody else who wants to come here and organize and rail against us for an hour and a half or two hours every Tuesday night to do so. But not to the detriment of us having serious discussions about the essential public policy challenges facing our city.
Mr. Mayor, a question?
Yes.
So if we do that, and the audience is already present?
They're welcome to, they're welcome to, of course, be in the public session and to be part of, to be part of listening to the discussion, but it changes...
Therein lies the rub, whether they listen or catcall, so.
Well...
That, I'm just saying that it could get problematic in terms of maintaining decorum as well, in that people are obviously, have demonstrated many times that they're willing to break decorum if they disagree with what's said by any particular...
Well, we have, I mean, between Ms. Capi and myself, you know, we've articulated the rules, I think, very, very clearly, and, you know, we can enforce the rules. But I know what is, I know when you have a monumental item, like the convention center item tonight, and all the energy is sucked out of the room, that's not good. It's not good. And so, you know, you know me all well enough, I'm putting it out there. This is gonna change. And one way it's gonna, one way it can change is for us to workshop. And I mean, and in the full light of public day, by the way. Absolutely. But it is as important that I listen to Rick Jennings as it is I listen to some of the people who come here every single week to say the same darn thing. I want this to be, I want this to be more productive. Larry?
Just for the record, I couldn't agree with you more.
Thank you.
We have very little opportunity to talk to each other. And we have, with the Brown Act limitations, we can only talk to a few people, anyway. And the answers that we seek may not rest with the few people that we choose to talk to, to maintain the Brown Act. So I'm very much in favor of it. Two things I have to report. One, we did have an ad hoc meeting last Friday. We finished all of the direct reports policies, the linkage policies to the direct reports, and they're gonna be coming to council very soon. And they, that will delineate what it is we expect from the people who report directly to the council and what we will be evaluating them on. So I urge all the council members to take a close look at those reports, because that will be the evaluation tool that we will use. We're telling them what we want them to accomplish, and we're gonna look to see if they accomplished it. The second thing is that we finished the overall policy on what we're trying to do as a city. It is the global statement that we are trying to make, what we are trying to accomplish. We took the general plan items, we took the items from the retreat, we melded them together, and came up with what it, what are we trying to do? What are we trying to accomplish as a city? Now, I will warn you that some of the things that we talked about in the workshop are things that we want to avoid, and we will put those in other policies. But these will be all of the positive things that we are trying to accomplish as a city. Second thing I'm gonna remind everyone is that we have a Hack the Park Day on Saturday. We have a group that's gotten together to provide STEM training at Laguna Creek Park. On this Saturday, it's going to be from 9:00, from 10:00 to 4:00. It's all kinds of STEM, hands-on STEM activities, nature activities for kids. It's gonna be a fun day at Laguna Creek Park, 10:00 AM, that's on Center Parkway and Jacinto. North Laguna Creek Park, 10:00 AM to 4:00. Come out, bring the kids, have a good time. It's gonna be fun. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's remember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, I like your idea. You, you had this idea a month or so ago and hosted a couple of meetings that, where we did an afternoon session, and I thought that worked really well. So maybe...
Maybe that's, maybe that, maybe that's part of the way to do it, sure.
Or some variation of that, I thought, worked really well. My comment is for the city manager tonight, and this is a follow-up on the illegal marijuana grow enforcement. My understanding is that we may be lacking some resources originally promised to that effort in terms of how we handle the materials after a house is identified and approached. And part of our lack of resources has created a, a real nuisance for community members who live close to a home where a grow has been identified. And so I want to make sure that we expeditiously follow through on having those resources in place, so we don't put communities in a worse situation than we found them in. We are, we are not, we are, we are not following the most important rule of all, which is do no harm. I think we're making it a little bit worse when we don't follow all the way through. So if you could follow up with me on that shortly, I would really appreciate it, and anybody else who's interested.
Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I also like your idea. I think that, given the past, in the past, the council had afternoon meetings and evening meetings. I think that that workshop would be more productive if we did it during the earlier hours. Also, I think a half hour is probably not enough by the time all of us chime in on any particular subject.
Half hour for what? I'm sorry.
For a workshop, rather than...
Half hour?
Yeah. How long did you suggest to do that?
No, no, I'm, no, no, I'm talking about a full meeting.
Oh, a full meeting, okay.
That is, that is in workshop form and setting. That's what I'm talking about.
All right. So I misunderstood you.
Once or twice a month, yes.
Okay, great. You know, in terms of the behavior at the council, I did bring up, and I checked with our city attorney, that it is not requisite that we videotape public comment, not on the agenda. I would posit that many people come because they get to see themselves on TV. So I'd like to just lay this suggestion out to the council to think about, that perhaps that might be one way to sort of rein in some of the behavior, if we did not televise the public comments, not on the agenda. As far as my announcements, the Natomas Community Association is this Wednesday, June 20th, 6:30 PM, at South Natomas Community Center. River Park Neighborhood Association meets this Thursday, June 21st, 7:30 PM, at Fremont Presbyterian Church. And this Saturday, our fourth and final East SAC Pops in the Park will happen from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at Glen Hall Park. And we've got a special band, The Count, coming. All three shows thus far have been very well attended and extremely well-received. We've served thousands of people already, so I hope to see you. And you have one more chance in South Natomas in September to enjoy our South Natomas Pops Concert. That will be, I believe, September 15th. We expanded into South Natomas three years ago, and it's growing steadily. Next year, we're not going to differentiate, you know? It's one district, so it'll just be District 3 Pops in the Park.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to join my colleagues in saying, I think the idea of having a workshop during the day, whether it be in the evening or during the daytime, I think it's a great idea. It gives us an opportunity to really take a deep dive into a lot of different subjects, also bring in other areas of expertise to have those discussions. So I too support that idea, and would like to see it happen on a monthly basis. Just wanted to tell you that. Couple of announcements for you. On Thursday, the 21st, District 7 is gonna have office hours in the neighborhood. It's gonna take place at the Robbie Waters Pocket Greenhaven Library from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. We encourage you to come on out and tell us about all the opportunities we have to make our district better. And speaking of making our district better, on Saturday, the 23rd, we've got the Renfree Park Volunteer Day. That's gonna take place from 9:00 to 1:00 PM, and we encourage you to come out and join us, as we're gonna be repainting the benches and the soccer goals. We're gonna be performing park maintenance, sprucing up the park, and beverages and lunch will be provided. And so come on out. If you'd like more information, you can RSVP, devon@devonlavel@gmail.com, and/or just call our office in order to come on out. And then the final announcement is 4th of July is fast approaching, and if you'd like to participate in the Pocket Parade, the Pocket Festival, or the Pocket Pet Pageant, you can call our office at area code 916-808-7007, or you can fill out a registration form online. So please give us a call and come on out for a great time on the 4th of July. It's gonna be a wonderful day, and we're looking for great weather.
No fireworks.
Thank you. Councilman Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any, any method for us to help us conduct our business better and have good dialogue, I'm supportive of that. Quick announcements here. This Wednesday, well, that's tomorrow, join us at, from, at 5:00 for the College Glen Food Trucks. Get to know your neighbors and friends, and we're gonna have office hours out there. But also, at 6:00, we're gonna be joined with the College Glen Little League at Glenbrook Park during the food truck event to celebrate the good work that our Parks Department's done, and in conjunction with the Little League, of all the improvements to Glenbrook Park, including upgrading the, the dog park, and also dealing with all the dust that was happening when we didn't have a parking lot out there. So join us for the ribbon cutting and celebration, and then the College Glen Little League also has a great announcement to make that we hope everyone will join in on. That's at 6:00 tomorrow, is when the ribbon cutting, but we'll have food trucks there at 5:00. Also, at, later on that evening, over in the Tahoe Park community, at, we're gonna have the East Command Cafe with our police department, starting at 6:30. And we're gonna have an opportunity over at our Sacramento Police Department Communication Center to answer questions that our police department can, can answer regarding neighborhood safety, any, any issues, including, it was brought up today, our illegal firework abatement strategy that we have, six-week strategy right now, where folks can report illegal firework usage and what we're doing to combat it. Lastly, the Tahoe Park food trucks are on Friday, the 4th Friday of every month, that is... That is this Friday, June 22nd, at 5:00 PM at Tahoe Food Truck. And we are going to have our Vision Zero team out there talking about all of the efforts we are trying to do to help safety on our roads, ensuring that cyclists, pedestrians, and drivers all share the road and have a safe driving experience in Sacramento. With that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for another wonderful Tuesday night.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of announcements, and then a request of our city manager and, I think, our city clerk. First of all, Hollywood Park Neighborhood Association has their meeting tomorrow night, almost tonight, but tomorrow night at Hollywood Park Elementary School at 6:30. And then South Oak Park Community Association has their monthly meeting at the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative on Thursday at 6:00 PM. We have on Saturday morning at 9:00 AM, a cleanup at Mangan Park. We're getting ready to kind of relaunch our urban ag project. And then on Sunday at 6:00 PM, we have our first music in the park in Curtis Park. And unsupervised will be there with our friend Phil Serna and others. So if you want to come, and I will be scooping Gunther's ice cream as I do at all of those. The other thing, I just want to make a request here of the council. So I've been on the council seven and a half years now, and I've tried very hard to stay kind of within the parameters of what impacts the city most. And every so often, we have a resolution that is around another country or something like that. And I know Mr. Carr has addressed that in certain ways about what our responsibilities are. I think what's happening right now in our country and what's happening to families who come across the border is, is just unbelievable and unfathomable. And I would like to see the city take a position on this and bring a resolution next week.
I concur.
The, the visuals and the audios that we see are reminiscent of what happened in cattle cars in World War II and the internment of Japanese here. And if we, people in this country have to take a stand. I know our mayor next door is flying down to El Paso with a number of mayors that are going to be doing protesting. And I would like to see our city just take a position on it. And I'm happy to work on a resolution, Mindy, if we could bring it back next week. I know it's tight, but as a special presentation, we, we need to do the right thing here.
Tomorrow morning, I know at 9:00 at the Matsui Courthouse, there's going to be a rally and an unfurling of banner and all. I know I will be there. And I'd like to get to Texas on Thursday, but I don't know if I'm going to be able to. Yeah, it's unacceptable and abhorrent, and I'm glad you raised it tonight. It is not our country. We should not be doing this.
And Mr. Mayor, to add on to that, I think that I've been approached by many of our Sacramento residents who are, who feel this concern. And if Mr. City Manager could follow up with our contract with the fuel network, where they're, they've been asking, how can they adopt some of these children and, or help in, at least, support them to help get them, anything we can do on that side and for people who want to go through that legal process to help these children, let's figure out how our residents here are saying, we'll go and figure out what we do. They just need a path. But if we can use that fuel network contract and get them to correct, get an act on that, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Jay, I think this does rise to the level where we should make a stand.
Thank you. I agree.
This is horrendous.
Thank you for raising it, Jay. I'll ask Adam Clerk.
I just need to read into the Record of Board and Commission Appointments. Councilmember Chenier will be appointed to the Sacramento Countywide Oversight Board. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, nothing further. Word heard.